Hi, everyone, and welcome to the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Long Meadow Select Board Meeting and Eversource Public Forum. We get started, just some housekeeping items to take care of. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I will be confirming that all persons and members anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Morantz.
Here.
Josh Levine.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Tom Lecusa.
Yes, here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
Thank you. This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Twenty of the Acts of Two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is convening by Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. Is that right?
Normally, we don't, but I do believe you were going to enable it for the public forum part.
Yeah, so we we will be enabling the chat function for the public forum. Thank you. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment, resident comments, using the Zoom webinar format. Members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak should identify their names and addresses only, and each individual will be afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. First item on tonight's agenda before we get to the public forum, our Select Board announcements, and for that, I'm going to flip it over to Lynn.
Thank you. So a big thank you to the three hundred and nine registered voters for coming out to the special Fall Town Meeting that was held on November second, and also a huge shout out to the town moderator, staff, and the volunteers for ensuring that we had a smooth meeting. You can view the full meeting minutes on the town website by visiting the town meeting page at longmeadow.org. A live virtual design public hearing will be held on December seventh regarding the Blueberry Hill Elementary School Improvement Safe Roots to Spool Project. This is being hosted by Mass DOT. The hearing is from six to seven P M. again on Tuesday, December seventh, and the login details are available on the town website. And the Senior and Veteran Volunteer Tax Abatement Program is about to start again. Applications are available either online or in person at the Town Hall or at the Adult Center. This enables seniors and veteran applicants to earn up to a fifteen hundred dollar abatement off their property tax in exchange for volunteering in a town department. And all of this information is located online at longmeadow.org, or you can call the Adult Center at five six five four one five oh, or Veteran Services at five six five four one five oh. That's all I have for announcements tonight.
Thank you, Lynn. Does anybody have questions for Lynn with regard to the announcements? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. The next item on our agenda is the public forum with Eversource regarding their proposed gas pipeline expansion in Long Meadow. We'd like to thank Joe Mitchell and his team from Eversource for participating in this forum. We'd also like to welcome everyone participating in the Zoom call tonight and those watching at home, including concerned residents from Long Meadow and Springfield, municipal leaders, elected officials, and members of the press. Tonight's public forum will be conducted as follows. Joe Mitchell and his team will make a brief presentation on their proposed pipeline. Afterward, I will read a statement on behalf of the Select Board, which was shared during Eversource's open houses last week. We will then allow three abutters to the proposed pipeline to make statements. I will then ask a series of questions on behalf of the Select Board and town officials. Once those questions have been answered to our satisfaction, we will open it up to resident questions and comments. For residents, please type your questions or comments into the chat. We will call on you in order and allow you to answer your question, ask your question directly to Eversource. Does anyone have any questions about the protocol? Okay, saying none. At this point, we'll turn it over to Joe Mitchell and Eversource for their presentation.
Thank you very much, Chairman Strange, and thank you, Select Board members, for having us this evening. It is our goal to do as much outreach as possible, have the community aware of our proposed project, because we want to, we want to receive their feedback as part of this process and the follow-on EFSP process, which I'll go into. I'm going to, with Archie, I do believe my team is already in as a panelist, and I'm going to share my screen if that's okay with you, Mark. Sure. Actually, I'm seeing it says host disabled participant screen sharing, so I need admin to allow me to share my screen. There we go, now I got it. And can you, and now, yep. And can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I just got to rearrange some things here on my computer. Two years into this, we're all getting better every time we do this. Again, thank you for allowing us to share with you the reason for proposing this important project. We'll talk about the scope and try to get your feedback as part of our outreach efforts. This is just one step in a very involved process associated with a project of this size. We'll be incorporating that feedback into our filing with the Energy Facility Siting Board, or EFSP. During the EFSP process, there'll be additional opportunity for the public to weigh in on this project. And I do believe, you know, after the Select Board has their questions, I do believe it's going to be opened up to the public, so we'll hear your input and your questions as well, and we'll respond to them. But I just want to emphasize that this is just the beginning, and there'll be more opportunity to opine on the subject. I, I'm Joe Mitchell, I'm Community Relations Specialist for Eversource Energy. Long Meadow and Springfield and a number of other towns in Western Massachusetts are a part of my responsibility. I'll have the other members of my team turn on their microphones and their camera and introduce themselves, please.
Hello, I'm Richard Salvarezza, I'm the Project Manager for the Western Mass Reliability Project. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. I'm Mark Gonzalez, General Manager, Eversource guest.
Good evening, everyone, doesn't look like I can come on video for some reason, but I'm Nikki Bruno, Director of Clean Technologies at Eversource.
My name is Erica Hafer, I'm a partner at Keegan Werlen. We're outside counsel to Eversource with regard to their state and local permitting.
Great, thank you, folks. Following the topics I'll be presenting this evening, project need, as I said, this is a reliability project. Eversource's mission is to provide the safe, reliable delivery of our energy products. We're hoping at the conclusion of this briefing, you'll see that we're trying to mitigate a reliability risk to fifty-eight thousand existing customers in the greater Springfield area, including approximately seven hundred fifty or fifteen percent of all the gas customers in Long Meadow. We'll discuss the project's scope, routing analysis, alternatives that were examined, and potential routes for the proposed project. We'll describe the joint effort, the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, or TGP, for the Long Meadow Point of Delivery, or POD site. We'll discuss safety topics, the regulatory approval process, and the approvals that are needed at the state and local level in addition to the EFSP approval for this project. We'll touch on the project's schedule, community outreach that has been conducted thus far, and our continued communications with this project. And lastly, there's a slide that contains the team's contact information and address of the project's website. Then, with the Select Board's permission, we'll open it up to questions and answers. On this slide, you can see the project shape, the orange shaded area, and hopefully you can see my mouse, that indicates the fifty-eight thousand customers that are fed by a single source of natural gas from TGP's transportation system. The green line along the bottom is a simplified depiction of TGP's transmission infrastructure. It's not just a single line, there are, there's redundancy built in and crossovers and things like that, but this is just a simple depiction. The natural gas travels from west to east, and as a transmission system, it's made up of large diameter piping, high pressures, and transports large volumes of gas across great distances. The green transmission line travels north up to Eversource's Agawam Gate Station, or POD. It's located at the top of Springfield Street near Dave's Soda and Pets. At this point, Eversource takes ownership of the product, and using our distribution network, we bring the gas down Memorial Avenue, across the Memorial Bridge, and deliver it to our Bliss Street Regulator Station. The Bliss Street Station is located near the old Basketball Hall of Fame. From here, Eversource distributes the gas to forty thousand customers on the east side of the Connecticut River, including Springfield, Chickaby, East Long Meadow, and the Northwest Quadrant of Long Meadow. Should there be a failure of the system near the Memorial Bridge, these forty thousand customers indicated by the orange shading would be without gas service. Should there be a failure in and around the Agawam Gate Station, or prior to that, the eighteen thousand customers in West Springfield, Agawam, and Southwick would be without gas, as well as the forty thousand customers on the east side of the river. As many are aware, Eversource acquired the assets of Columbia Gas last year. The project is something Columbia recognized a need for and made a level of progress in advancing through the years. Potential risk was highlighted during a tornado event of two thousand and eleven where images were captured on video of the tornado moving around the west side of the Memorial Bridge, very close to our gas or their gas infrastructure. Upon acquisition of Columbia's assets, Eversource immediately identified the importance of mitigating the risk to their greater Springfield community and fast-tracked this reliability project. At Eversource and all utilities, both gas and electric, we'd like to have contingencies built in and reliability into our systems to strengthen them to ensure the safe, reliable delivery of our energy products. There may be smaller subdivisions and pockets where single supply is acceptable, but large groups of customers and infrastructure conditions such as these warrant a robust level of redundancy. With seven towns at potential risk, including residences, businesses, hospitals, and schools, it is our intent to close the loop. We want to bring a second independent source to supply our existing customers. Our proposed project would connect our Bliss Street Station with a new point-of-delivery station at the southern end of Long Meadow. Should there be an issue at the Memorial Bridge, the forty thousand customers on the east side of the Connecticut River would be fed by this new source and not have their service interrupted. Should there be a failure prior to the Agawam Gate Station, our product could be backfed across the Memorial Bridge and spare the eighteen thousand customers, in addition to the forty thousand customers on the east side of the river, from a service interruption. We want to build resiliency for the seven and three-quarter miles of infrastructure to protect against a system failure, whether it be system failure, natural disaster, or third-party accidents. This project is about protecting our existing customers and not an expansion. The project is designed to strengthen our existing distribution network by providing a second source and close the loop on our infrastructure. This will increase reliability and better allow us to allow the company to conduct scheduled maintenance and repair leak-prone pipe. The risk we're trying to mitigate is to all fifty-eight thousand customers should there be an interruption in the vicinity of the Agawam Point of Delivery or the forty thousand customers in the Springfield area if there were an issue further downstream. And unlike an electrical outage, the duration of a large natural gas service interruption is significantly longer due to the nature of the product and the steps necessary to make the system safe. In a gas interruption, it's necessary to shut off the system at every customer's meter in addition to other system shut-offs. Additionally, after repairs are made to resolve the cause of the outage, valves are opened in segments which include customer shut-offs, safety checks are conducted, and pilot lights are relit. Entry into people's residences and businesses is required to accomplish this very time-consuming restoration process. The service of locksmiths and law enforcement are often required in this complex process. If there were an issue to the distribution system originating at or near the Agawam Gate Station due to mechanical failure, natural disaster, or third-party damage, it could have an unprecedented impact on the community. In such an event, Eversource would stand up its Incident Command System, which would likely draw on the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, or MEMA, and National Guard assistance would likely be required. Temporary shelters would be established, and depending on the severity of the outage, some of those shelters could be a significant distance away from the Springfield and Long Meadow area. We would call on other utilities nationwide for mutual aid. Making the system safe is a time-consuming process, especially with the high number of meter sets located inside of dwellings in this area. Once repairs to the system are made, the process to restore customer service is an even more complex and time-consuming one. If an extended outage were to occur in winter months, the impacts to the community and costs could rise exponentially with effects of freezing pipes and weather-related damage. Due to the precautions utilities take, large-scale natural gas outages are rare but not unheard of. The customers of another natural gas utility in New England experienced a service outage in January of two thousand and nineteen that impacted over seven thousand four hundred customers, and it was at the height of winter. Due to the complex series of events, natural gas service was interrupted. The restoration to the distribution network required a significant mutual aid effort and seven days to complete the job with help of one thousand responders. So what's our proposed solution? To solve the issue of a single supply to the region, Eversource proposes the following. Assist natural gas, excuse me, assist Tennessee Gas Pipeline in the construction of their proposed point-of-delivery site in Long Meadow. Install a new pipeline to transport natural gas from the TGP point-of-delivery to our existing Bliss Street Regulator Station in Springfield. We'll make improvements and other upgrades to our Bliss Street Station. We'll also be replacing certain segments of existing pipe infrastructure that are co-located with the intended route of the new independent source of supply. In order to connect the proposed point-of-delivery site on Hazerville Road in Long Meadow to our existing regulator station on Bliss Street in Springfield, the project team examined several potential routing options. Route options were analyzed based on extensive regulatory precedent. Environmental, community impacts, reliability, and cost, something the EFSP takes into consideration, were all factored in in our analysis. Our analysis continues as this, as this presentation to the Select Board is part of our community outreach effort. We considered, excuse me, in addition to pipeline solutions to the existing reliability concern, we also looked at several non-pipeline alternatives. They are energy efficiency, demand response, electrification, and geothermal. Unfortunately, these are conceptual alternatives that do not, do not meet the current urgent need of reliability to our existing customers. Eversource cannot call upon energy efficiency resources to meet its load planning requirements. Unlike gas supply resources, energy efficiency resources cannot be dispatched to meet load. In order for load response to be effective, it has to be a firm, large quantity, natural gas resource that a customer is willing to forego. Such scenarios do not exist in New England, and particularly in this service territory. Electrification. Eversource Energy is ready, willing, and able to contribute to achievement of these ambitious carbon reductions. Eversource Energy has already committed to achieve carbon neutrality in our operations by two thousand and thirty. Geothermal. Eversource Gas of Massachusetts does not have a department-approved geothermal program. Even if it did, like the other alternatives considered, such a program could help reduce demand for natural gas in the greater Springfield area, but could not replicate the timing, gas supply reliability, or cost of this project. Additional point-of-delivery locations and routing options were looked at, but due to environmental concerns, length of routing, and cost, the proposed location in Long Meadow was determined to be the most reliable, consistent with the minimization of environmental impacts and cost. Potential routes. After extensive analysis, the project team has come up with essentially four routes, which I'll describe. But just a note about terminology. As you can see on the map, we refer to one route as the preferred route and others as variations or alternatives. That's because, based on our current analysis, that preferred route scores the best, but several of the options score similarly. We are looking for your feedback and thoughts and local knowledge on these routes. Problems, concern, mitigation you'd like to see. And then, the team will go back over our route selection scoring analysis and make sure that it appropriately reflects what we hear today. So these routes are not final, and our analysis is ongoing. I'll go over these routes using the map on this slide. I'm aware it doesn't possess the greatest level of detail. However, I have a detailed depiction of the routes, but due to its elongated shape, it doesn't fit well on a single slide. Once I go through this slide, I'll swap out of this PowerPoint, and I'll show you the more detailed slide. But do be aware that this, the more detailed slide is on our website, and you can download it and look at it at your leisure. The preferred route is the west route that follows I ninety-one. It's annotated on this map in solid purple, and my mouse is over it roughly right now. It travels from the POD north on Shaker, which becomes Laurel, and it turns west on Converse. It goes north on Long Meadow Street, under the Long Meadow Curve, up the entrance ramp to Long Hill Street, and down East Columbus. Preferred Route Variation One. This is similar to the preferred route and annotated on this map as dotted orange. Like the preferred route, it travels north on Shaker, but then travels west on William Street before traveling north on Long Meadow Street, down the Long Meadow Curve, then Long Hill and East Columbus like the preferred route. Preferred Route Variation Two. This is known as the Forest Park Route. It's annotated as dotted red. It travels north on Shaker, becomes Laurel, west on Forest Glen Road, into Forest Park on Magawiska Road, and it exits the park on Long Hill and follows Long Hill to East Columbus. And our noticed alternative, this is known as the Eastern Route, and is shown as dotted green on the map. Like the other routes, it travels north on Shaker, becomes Laurel, it travels east on Converse, north on Dickinson, and then west on Sumner Ave. and continues to Long Hill and East Columbus. It's important to note that all these proposed routes are located within the roadway. And the map with the greater detail, since I rearranged some of my clutter on my screen here, apologies. So here's the, a detailed map that you can find on our website. As you can see, it's elongated, it's tough to see here, I'll zoom in a bit. And the colors are different than the previous map. Zoom out a bit here. And what you can see as it comes out of the POD, the
Oh, we're not seeing that alternate map.
Oh, you're not, okay, hang on, I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me know, I would have just kept on going there. And can you see it now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So you can see, so the preferred route is the yellow one. It travels farther north before turning west up onto Long Meadow Street. Noticed Alternative One is the blue one that comes across west on William Street and up on Long Meadow Street. Variation number two, the Forest Park Route, is the green route that just continues to travel north onto Magawiska and onto Long Hill. And then, noticed alternative is the red route. It travels north and east on Converse Street, north on Dickinson Street to the X, and essentially it stops actually prior to the X about a block or two, then comes down on one eighty-three and then to East Columbus. Now I want to make sure I'm sharing the proper screen here. And can you see the slide that shows the point of delivery?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So the point of delivery is where the natural gas is transferred from TGP's transmission system to Eversource's distribution system. It's our desire to have the POD as unobtrusive as possible. All infrastructure will be contained indoors. The proposed buildings will be designed to match the existing Long Meadow Country Club building, and noise-reduction construction methods and materials will be used. And this is the proposed layout at the point-of-delivery site. It's proposed to have five buildings located on approximately two and a half acres. Two of the buildings will belong to TGP, and three will belong to Eversource. The equipment inside the buildings will be used for pressure control, metering, heating, odorization, fire protection, security, and telemetry. Here you can see some of the design concepts, concepts for the exterior of the proposed buildings. Again, the purpose is to match the existing structure that's there. We want to be a good neighbor. The safe and reliable delivery of our energy products is our primary mission at Eversource. The point-of-delivery facility and the entire project will employ all the latest technologies with an eye on The point of delivery facility and, and the entire project will employ all the latest technologies with an eye on safety. Alarms, telemetry, onsite visits, and corrosion protection are just a few of the safety measures to be engaged. The individual who's been responsible for safety training in this region for the last several years is our senior specialist for gas emergency preparedness, Eric Madison. Eric was a firefighter for thirty-five years, serving thirty of them right here in Long Meadow. He was chief of the Long Meadow Fire Department for fifteen years. Eric knows the natural gas delivery infrastructure and he's also intimately familiar with firefighting, response, and procedures. He's uniquely qualified to enhance safety through first responder training for all aspects of the proposed project. This slide provides an outline of the EFSB regulatory process. We are seeking your input now, prior to filing with the, the project with the EFSB at the end of the year. During the elaborate EFSB process, there are opportunities for interested parties and persons to participate in a variety of ways and make your voices heard. This is a busy slide. The point this slide makes, I think, very clearly, is there are a number of state and local agencies that approval and permits may be required. The EFSB is just the first stop. This slide is also a busy slide. Detailed here are the estimated dates and, and are subject to change. The main point here is the EFSB process can take more, can take two years or more. In a best-case scenario, construction activities will not start until late two thousand twenty-three. To gain input, we needed to inform members of the public about the project. As details of the project have become clearer, we've shared with municipal officials and bodies, just as we are doing here this evening. We'll continue to do so. We've used the media in the region along with US Postal Service and door knockers for butters to notify the public about the project. We have a website that contains the most up-to-date information regarding the project. Last slide. This slide contains avenues to gather more information about the project. Um, if you use the camera function on your smartphone and hold it up to QR code on your screen, you'll be directed to the project's website for more information. This concludes the full part of our presentation and uh, with the um, select board's permission, we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, so the way we were gonna
So I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, I was gonna leave some for just a second and then I, maybe like twenty seconds, I'll stop sharing this slide and then um, and then we'll all see my face and yours.
Sure, sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Um, so before we get to questions, um, we do want to allow um, some of our, um, we, we want to uh, read in the uh, the statement that was read into the uh, record at EverSource's open houses last week. Uh, we want to do so for those that were not able to attend um, either open house on November ninth or November ten. Um, so without further ado, uh, Columbia Gas and now EverSource states that this project is necessary in the face of an undefined speculative threat of destruction to the existing pipeline located under the Memorial Bridge. Which services ratepayers east of the Connecticut River from the Tennessee Gas Station in Agawam. However, the risk of destruction facing that line has not been quantified. This Long Meadow Expansion Project is part of a much, much larger Western Mass project involving Tennessee Gas and infrastructure on the west side of the river that had to go through federal permitting. Tennessee Gas has agreed to build a meter station at the Long Meadow Country Club and paid handsomely for the right to do so. Based upon the presumption that Columbia Gas, now EverSource, would be able to build this gas expansion line in Long Meadow. Again, the publicly stated reason for this new line is the risk of loss facing the Memorial Bridge Line. So what is the measurable and quantifiable risk of loss? Are we talking about a national, uh, a natural disaster like the once-in-a-lifetime two thousand and eleven tornado? Are we talking about an earthquake, an act of terrorism? Any of these hypothetical events seem highly unlikely to occur, so again, without a risk assessment, we're left with speculation that some event may occur that results in a total loss of the Memorial Bridge Pipe and necessitates a new pipeline. The truth is that nothing is really broken here that needs to be fixed. Even assuming as a hypothetical that a second line is required, EverSource could achieve the same reliability benefits using other facilities in East Long Meadow or develop other strategies that do not require an expensive, redundant pipeline to provide additional gas in an emergency. So we would like to see a commissioned report by an independent third-party consultant that both the town and EverSource agree can provide an unbiased evaluation of the risk of loss for the Memorial Bridge Line and the Bliss, uh, Bliss Street Station in Springfield. Whose loss would equally impact EverSource's ability to deliver gas to Springfield's constituents. In addition to the select board, Town Meeting has also expressed its objection to the Long Meadow redundancy line. In two thousand and nineteen, Town Meeting approved the bylaw change which prohibits the use of a meter station in a residential zone. Understanding that Tennessee Gas enjoys federal blanket authority, Town Meeting also passed stringent regulations applicable to the construction of all new natural gas facilities. The select board stands with Town Meeting's opposition. Furthermore, construction and operation of EverSource's new pipeline would require significant town resources, including police, fire, and BPW resources to address construction-related impacts, such as impacts from road closings, traffic disruptions, and noise and dust associated with in-street work. In addition, construction-related activity is creating risk of damage to the buildings along other route, particularly in the historical district. Further, once constructed, the gate station located in a residential area of Long Meadow has the potential to expose nearby residents to methane from the facility. In addition to construction-related impacts, town emergency management officials conservatively estimate that the initial cost of the pipeline expansion to the town would exceed four hundred thousand dollars. Plus an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for system upgrades and gas detection at Wolf Swamp Road School, which is about a third of a mile from where the meter station would be located. Uh, for public safety, gas detection equipment, school district communications upgrades, emergency response planning and training, community outreach, training, and emergency management support, and finally, public health engineering support. The cause for these expenses is the meter station, which involves regulators, fixtures, valves, and above-ground structures that don't currently exist and which create an emergency management risk that otherwise wouldn't exist. In addition to its proximity to the Wolf Swamp Road School, the meter station would be located in a thickly residential neighborhood. And who is going to pay for these additional expenses? The town is on a shoestring budget every year due to its predominantly residential tax base and resulting high property tax rate. We do not have the means to absorb these costs. So the, so the risks to school kids and teachers and staff and homeowners alike created by the meter station are risks that may have to go unmitigated. In addition to bearing the public health and safety risks and the financial burden, Long Meadow residents would not reap the benefit of the expansion line. The gas from the new pipe will not flow directly into residents' homes or businesses, and many Long Meadow residents served by separate existing facilities in Long Meadow will not see benefits from the new line. In addition, any assumed benefits of increasing reliability will become smaller if, as mandated by the Commonwealth, natural gas use declines. So Long Meadow taxpayers will bear the burden but reap little benefit. Furthermore, a new line at an estimated cost of over forty million dollars is expensive and will be paid for by rate, ratepayers. Which includes ratepayers who live in Long Meadow and Springfield. Instead of a new pipeline, these ratepayers funds could be deployed instead to promote energy efficiency and other programs, including smart thermostats, heat pumps, and other technologies that reduce the use of gas in the community, or to repair and replace existing leaky infrastructure. A new pipe is also inconsistent with the Commonwealth's net zero policy, which requires utility companies to reduce and eliminate fossil fuel emissions by two thousand and fifty. The new pipeline will be in service far longer than the net zero in twenty fifty, as assumed by the new policy. And EverSource has not answered the critical question of whether this proposed expansion line is consistent with the Commonwealth's newly passed net zero roadmap legislation. Uh, at this point, we're gonna open a, open the forum up to um, statements by a butters. Um, can we allow Gary Levine in first for his statement? And a butters, please remember to state your name and address for the record. Alright, I'm moving Gary in now.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I apologize before I read that I'm gonna cover some of the thing points that were just said very eloquently by Mr. Strange, but that's what I have. Gary Levine, two oh seven William Street. I live on one of the alternative proposed routes. It goes down William Street and then up to Long Meadow Street through part of the historic district, and down Long Meadow Street into the city of Springfield. It's a rather congested area. Can imagine the disruption and the cost to the town of this route. The other routes would be equally disruptive and costly to our town. As rare as these incidents are, we are all aware of the gas pipeline explosion which occurred in the Merrimack Valley in twenty eighteen, which was owned by Columbia Gas Company, now part of EverSource. This was in a residential neighborhood. The current project is planned for the same type of location. In our case, a residential neighborhood that contains an elementary school close by. In addition, the safety record of the company bringing the gas to our area, Tennessee Gas Pipeline, is less than stellar according to the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. Bearing in all this in mind, why is this industrial gas metering station and high-pressure pipeline that you were proposing being planned for a residential neighborhood near an elementary school? Before you think that this is a case of NIMBY or not in my backyard, I think it's a case of the Abbey, not in anyone's backyard. We don't need this project as proposed. This will lead to more greenhouse gases being emitted with a concomitant, concomitant ef, effects on health, safety, and climate change. In twenty nineteen, our town passed zoning laws precluding such a placement. The state of Massachusetts has passed the Next Generation Roadmap, which sets interim emissions reduction targets of at least fifty percent by twenty thirty, seventy-five percent by twenty forty, and zero emissions by twenty fifty. I don't see how you can justify the adding of a high-pressure gas pipeline and industrial gas metering station in the current gas infrastructure. Shouldn't you be focused on repairing and maintaining the current infrastructure and moving to renewable forms of energy in order to meet these requirements? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Did we get your name and address?
Yeah, I said it earlier. Do you need it again?
Not if we got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Um, our next butter is Vicki Deal. Can we bring Vicki in? Vicki should be in now.
Alright. Unmute myself and, well, there we go. My name is Vicki Deal. I live at one oh five Converse Street. I am directly on the uh, First Choice Route. And I have lived here for over thirty-five years. During this time, I have seen Converse, which has always been a very busy street, become busier and busier with more and more heavy-duty truck traffic. Large truck, tractor-trailer trucks have become more and more noticeable. Their jake braking and constant speeding rattle my dining room cabinet and at times my entire house. I live in what is actually a thirty mile an hour zone, speed zone, but neither cars nor trucks pay any attention to this posted speed. There are constant accidents at the intersection of Converse and Laurel Streets. Potholes abound during and after each winter. One of my big concerns is how this constant jarring will affect the pipelines that exist as well as any new ones. I also wonder had there been any traffic studies along this route or along Interstate ninety-one that give us any more additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Okay, last and certainly not least, Marjorie Brunz. Marjorie, can you please just unmute yourself?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Thank you. I, I had some technical difficulties. Uh, good evening. My name is Marjorie Brunz. My husband and I own a house on Hazerville Road, directly across from the proposed industrial gas complex. Um, I have lived in Long Meadow. I, my, my parents lived in Long Meadow when I was, when I was born. I've lived on many streets in Long Meadow. If the proposed industrial gas complex is built, we will live directly across the street from it. Besides the unsightly maintenance buildings of the Long Meadow Country Club, we will be looking at the five buildings of this complex, three of them EverSource and two of them Tennessee Gas. Haz, Hazerville Road is a typical, thickly-settled residential street with sidewalks where people walk their dogs and children walk to school. We live less than a third of a mile from Wolf Swamp School. I am upset and frankly furious about the prospect of an industrial gas complex being across, being built across from my home. Tonight I choose to concentrate my remarks on the health and safety factors that clearly show why the five proposed buildings should not be built in Long Meadow. Why the high-pressure gas line should not go through our town. First, the Connecticut River Valley already is recognized as having very poor air quality. Second, EverSource admits that their personnel will only rarely be on-site. Perhaps only a couple of times each month, according to them. This means that the people watching the equipment, monitoring the gas pressure, will be in Ohio. Just as they were when the Merrimack, Merrimack Valley gas explosions caused over a billion dollars of property damage, one fatality, and more than twenty-five injuries due an over-pressurized gas line in September twenty eighteen. The name of the gas company has changed, but most of the personnel have not. The people just have a different logo on their uniforms. Two gas lines will run right through the town of Long Meadow. The present sixty PSI line and the proposed two hundred PSI line. Again, the proposed industrial gas complex is less than a third of a mile from an elementary school. I asked each of you at EverSource, if I were your seventy-four-year-old asthmatic mother, would you seriously tell me the gas complex will not affect my health? Would you seriously tell me you would want your children walking to school past this complex? Would you choose to buy a home abutting an industrial Would you choose to buy a home abutting an industrial gas complex? Anywhere near such a facility? Would you seriously tell me that living across the street from this complex will not drastically affect the property value of my home? And finally, I hope the PR person that came up with the term Long Meadow POD Station as a euphemism for the Long Meadow Industrial Gas Complex got a nice bonus. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. And again, thank you to Gary and to Vicki. Uh, thank you all for participating tonight. Um, we are now going to be moving into the select board question, um, phase of the, of the program. Um, and without further ado, I'll hop right into it. Hey, Marjorie. I'm sorry. There was one, um, abutter who did type into the chat that, um, she would like to speak. Do you want to wait until the resident? No, that's fine. That's fine. You can bring her in. Alright, I'm moving Elizabeth in now.
Thank you.
Can you see and hear me?
We sure can.
Do I qualify as an abutter? I live half a block away.
Uh, sure. Just give us your name and your address, please.
My name's Elizabeth Elam. I live at sixty-three Whitman Road. The, the, uh, Long Meadow Point of Delivery Station would be at the end of my street. I first learned of it in March of two thousand nineteen, when then-town manager Steve, Stephen Crane, came to my son's Boy Scout meeting for a merit badge, talking about, you know, what, what town officials do. And, uh, my son asked a question about this sale of property he had heard about, and there was a long discussion. He said, "Well, if you want to know what's coming, go to the one in East Long Meadow on Shaker Road." So, both of my children and I, on our way home from that meeting that night, went and parked across the street and then parked next to the East Long Meadow apparently similar Point of Delivery, Delivery Station. And I, I thought I'd be so clever and show them that this thing, you know, won't be horrible. We opened our windows and we all started gagging and coughing, 'cause it was so painful to try to breathe those fumes. And my children started screaming and I could barely hear them because the thing was so loud. So we rolled up the window and sat there shaking. And I tried to tell my s- my, my kids, "That can't happen in Long Meadow." Don't you remember when our neighbors went to build an, a, a extension on their house? They had to ask all of the neighbors if we liked the design. When commercial properties are sold and, and they want to change how they're zoned, the whole town gets to vote on these things. That's not gonna happen! And you're telling me you still wanna make this happen and put this thing into a residential neighborhood? Where, as the previous, uh, abutter said, are, are you going to, uh, compensate us for the loss of home value? I, I don't see anyone from Eversource wanting to come in and buy up our properties. And I gotta tell you, it's scary knowing that I get to live there after this thing is built. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for sharing. Okay. Um, so any other abutters, uh, we'll, we'll wait until the resident comment and question period, which hopefully isn't too, too far down the road. Uh, so our first select board question uh, says, "According to Mass. General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section sixty-nine H, the Energy Facility Siting Board is charged with providing a reliable energy supply for the Commonwealth with a minimum impact on the environment at the lowest possible cost. In effectuating that responsibility, the EFSP is required to review the, quote, 'need for, cost of, and environmental impacts of natural gas pipelines and facilities.' Furthermore, Mass. General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section sixty-nine J requires a natural gas petition to provide, among other information, an analysis of the need for the gas facility." Question to Eversource, specifically, "How do you justify the need for this expansion line?"
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, and as we, part of my, uh, presentation described, you know, the fifty-eight thousand customers that have a single source, which, um, could ha- uh, experience a failure, whether it be, uh, mechanical, natural, or, um, third-party. But to go further into that, um, I'm gonna ask Erica, uh, 'cause she's our, um, permitting and citing specialist, uh, go into that into a little more detail.
Hi, sure. Um, so yes, as part of the EFSP statutory review, they will review need. Eversource, when they file their petition, will, um, w- will lay out their need case for the project, and the EFSP and any other parties to the proceeding, um, will, uh, issue discovery, um, ask follow-up questions, hold evidentiary hearings, um, and determine whether the, whether Eversource's need case satisfies the EFSP's statutory standard and, and their precedence in other cases. The EFSP has, um, lots of case law on both the electric and gas side, um, to determine when a particular facility is needed and what meets their need standards. Um, and that's something that will be, that will be litigated at the EFSP.
So, just, just a quick follow-up. So, so it, it, uh, with the understanding that there will be a more formal filing at EFSP, um, as we, as we stand here today, the justification for this expansion line is all the things that could go wrong if there is a, um, disablement or a failure of the, um, of the line. Is that right?
Uh, so that was a two-part question. I'll, I'll take the first one, which is yes, Eversource will be making a formal, comprehensive, statutorily-based filing with the EFSP, um, scheduled to, to go in, you know, by the end of the year, and then the EFSP process starts, um, in which it is, it is a full, um, formal administrative regulatory review process, um, that will have several rounds of discovery, evidentiary hearings, and, and, um, like Joe indicated, um, can take, uh, you know, two or more years to complete. So it is a, a very comprehensive process, and, and as Joe indicated, this is the beginning of the process. We're, we're kind of introducing the project and, and providing some information, um, to the towns, but that's, that's kind of the formal statutory process, um, set out by the statutes that, that you quoted at the beginning.
And, and so, so the justify, justification for the need right now is uh, the potential harm, excuse me, the potential harm to those forty thousand or fifty-eight thousand customers if there is a loss of, um, gas delivery on, at, on, on the line?
It's exactly right, Chairman. And then it's, it's something we've looked at, um, for our system modeling. We've evaluated what would be the impact, what would be the expected customer outage if there were, um, a failure of this kind, particularly, um, for example, on the west side of, of the Connecticut River or even on the bridge. Um, and as Joe mentioned numerous times, we've calculated that the expected outage would be as many as fifty-eight thousand customers. I know we've been saying that number a lot, but it really is important to understand what's behind that number, and that's two hundred thousand plus people. Um, being that's, you know, some of our, our customers are families or multifamily dwellings. Uh, so that's something that certainly enters into our calculation. So we have sat down and, and taken a hard look at what an incident of that scale would look like and what a response, wh- what would be necessary to respond to, you know, an incident involving two hundred thousand people, and it's, it's an extremely serious event, uh, especially if it were to occur in the winter. Um, we have hundreds of thousands of, of people, uh, relying on our, our service for heat in the winter. And if that's interrupted, it creates a significant event where people are trying to, um, potentially leave the area, potentially find shelter in other communities surrounding, um, western Massachusetts. And it creates a, a difficult scenario for people, especially low-income families, who don't necessarily have the, the funding or the fu- the, you know, the means to immediately uh, relocate their family to shelter. Um, distribution of food and water becomes a, a significant concern with, um, events of this scale. And we'd certainly be looking at an event that would involve the state and federal emergency management, um, organizations, as well as most likely the National Guard to assist us in an event like this. So really, the need conversation behind this project, while, while the risk is, i- it's a low, um, i- it's a low chance of occurrence, but it's an extremely high potential impact. Um, so that's, that's really been our, our, our calculus on this, on this project.
Thank you. Thank you. It's very, very well thought out and articulated. Um, so does, did, has Eversource done calculations to determine just how low the possibility of an outage of this nature would, uh, it, it would occur?
That's something that's very difficult to quantify. Um, there are various situations that could occur on the line, um, whether it be some kind of mechanical failure that we can anticipate. Obviously, we're, we're continually maintaining our systems to ensure that there are no failures. But, uh, there are al- always incidents that, that cannot be predicted. There's also the risk of some sort of natural event, whether it be a natural disaster of some kind. Um, again, very low probability of occurrence, but, um, could significantly affect the line. And then finally, there's outside forces. So, for example, other excavating companies, potentially other utility companies, or even customers themselves who are excavating around our lines or even around Tennessee Gas's, uh, lateral that feeds our station in Agawam, uh, that's a significant risk as well. Uh, if there was a damage to the line, it could uh, require us to shut down, uh, that facility.
So, so are you saying that you won't be quantifying, uh, the risk level that you, uh, uh, of the outage? So, so, so from, I think from a lay perspective, in order to justify, um, or articulate a need for a natural gas pipeline, you'd have to show the need.
That's under- that's understandable.
Right. So you have all this potential, you know, um, impacts, negative impacts from an outage, but you don't get there unless there's an outage. And, you know, so we're trying to figure out what events are you considering when you're calculating your risk? Right? Are we ta- are we talking about tornadoes?
Could very well be a tornado. It could be a mechanical incident on the bridge. It could be an earthquake. Those, those are significant kind of natural disaster sorts of events that could occur. But again, mechanical failures or third-party damages are some of the, some of the topics that we're, we're discussing.
Do you know how many, sorry, do you know how many major earthquakes there have been in Massachusetts since nineteen hundred?
I don't have that data immediately avail- available, but it, it's, so to clarify our need argument here, it's something that the company has to do. We have, we have an ob- obligation to our customers when we identify a risk and a potential serious outcome to what is this condition of a, of a, of a single source of supply. We do have an obligation to identify the risk, raise it up through, uh, these, these, uh, processes, and primarily the EFSP is the process by which we, we elevate these sorts of projects. And we generate a filing that encompasses, um, the need statement, the potential impacts, both environmental and human, and our potential alternatives. And then it is the responsibility of the EFSP to evaluate our petition, which would be the, you know, an independent review of, uh, and risk analysis, um, that would be compared against our, our need statement and our potential outcome.
So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I might be able to help you there, Mr. Chair. Um, we've thought, part of the EFSP process, they look at, and the standard is, um, foreseeable and predictable events. So, you know, we put together, we'll, we'll make our case, and they'll decide if it's foreseeable and predictable. And to your point, it's not always gonna be, um, a natural disaster. I think, um, perhaps Mark Gonzalez can go into some depth here. You know, in two thousand nineteen, in Rhode Island, it was just, it wasn't a natural disaster. There were some mechanical failures, a sequence of events, if you will, on a single supply in seventy-five hundred customers. Can you go into any detail there, Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. That's, um, that's what I was gonna mention. I think it might help you out, Mr. Chairman, and the select board to kind of understand our perspective on this. And, you know, as you heard from Joe and Richard, we really take this potential event seriously and, you know, have come up with a solution we think that can provide that adequate second source of supply. So as Joe mentioned, in January of two thousand nineteen, we talked about it during the open houses also. We had about, uh, another company had seventy-four hundred customers, um, out, and that, and that really did cause some real, uh, problems for the community. Obviously, this one would be substantially larger, and as Richard talked about, um, you know, much more, um, customers impacted, so a bigger event. You know, so we look at that as a, as a lesson, lesson learned and something we need to learn from. And here we have a solution to avoid, you know, what happened in Newport, Rhode Island. The other thing, too, that I think might, might help, um, uh, help you understand our perspective is the Dynamic Risk Report, which, uh, many of you may be aware of, was performed statewide. Uh, safety assessment that was performed. It's a public document, um, through the DPU. And in Section eight, it does talk about single sources of supply and recommending that, you know, statewide utilities look at that. And, you know, that's something, too, that, you know, is, is another piece that they recognized, um, that this is a potential risk and we should address it. So, just a couple of more tidbits of, of, you know, why we're, um, very passionate about this project and, you know, feel we want to do the right thing by the community and our customers.
Thank you for that. So, so is it, is it your pin- your opinion that Eversource doesn't have to, um, justify or, or quantify the risk involved with, um, loss of the line under the Memorial Bridge?
Yeah, I, I, go ahead. Go, go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna say, I, I was gonna apologize and say, "I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't really understand exactly what you're saying." Perhaps Mark does.
So there's, I mean, obviously, there's, there's a, 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 um, uh, a threat of, of loss, right? We're talking about, and thi- this is an original comment by, by me or the select board. This was proffered by, um, Wayne Mackley and others that, you know, the two thousand and eleven tornado really got Columbia Gas thinking about this. And by the way, the tornado was an EF3 that went right over the bridge, and the bridge didn't even bat an eye. But, so you're talking about, there's a need for redundancy because there is a risk of loss to the Memorial Bridge line. Right?
So I would, I would say this, um, you know, the tornado, we'll all agree, that's a remote thing, right? Um, you know, it, it definitely highlighted the risk at the Memorial Bridge. But, you know, as you've heard, um, there's much more at risk with, you know, seven miles of, of pipe that's single source that could be hit, um, and could cause, uh, a loss of that supply. Um, we have, you know, Newport, mechanical failure, like at the Agawam Gate Station, that could put it at risk. So the way we view it is, we've had recent real events, um, you know, Texas is another one, different set of circumstances. But, you know, there are real events that we can point to that we feel, um, justify the great need to do this project. And, you know, I, I, in this biz- I've been in this business a very, very long time, and I think one of the most important things I've done as an operator my whole career is review incidents that have happened, that have caused major problems to our customers and our communities, learn from those, and I really believe it's our job as professionals to mitigate those risks and figure out things that we can do to our system to make it safer, to make it more reliable. So that's really the perspective that we're coming from, Mr. Chairman, in, in learning. So that's really the perspective that we're coming from, Mr. Chairman, in in learning from. Events that have happened around us and how to get better.
Now, just add one more thing, Mr. Chair, is um, you know, I I do use, I have used the example, and I did it again today, um. The tornado and the bridge, but that's just one example. What we're really trying to do is, you know, identify foreseeable and predictable events. It is seven and three quarter miles worth of pipeline, some lengths of it are seventy years old. And as a company, we replace um older infrastructure with newer infrastructure wherever we can. And with fifty eight thousand customers on a single source with that kind of a length and that kind of age and other circumstances, including the bridge. Something we've identified as a company that we want to mitigate this risk. And so we put together a package, for the most part, we're collecting more input. We'll bring it forward to the E- Energy Facility Siting Board, and then they'll decide if this reliability project is worth moving forward or not.
So if the uh if your concern is that the the pipe is seventy years old, why wouldn't you just replace the pipe?
I can answer that. Have fifty eight thousand customers on a single source. I love that Mark answered, but that's. That solves some of the problem, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair, that's part of it, but it doesn't solve. The entire problem and give us the redundancy, full independent redundancy for the fifty eight thousand customers.
So uh I thought Mark Mark was gonna jump in. But but are are most of the gas lines single source in the state?
No, not actually. Um, there's, we always work to try to um connect single sources and put a second source in. Um, you know, examples, I've had many examples in my career at EverSource where we've cross-connected systems. We always try to have a second source. Um, not to say that they're not out there, um, you know. We'll tend to focus on the bigger ones that have the most impact like this one. Um, you you do have single sources out there, but they're very small amounts of customers, so. Um, much, much lower in volume, so this one tends to be very high um on our list to accomplish for a second source.
Okay. You sufficiently not answered the question, congratulations.
Mark, Mark, can I just weigh in for a second? No, I I can, could I, do do did I did I not answer it? Um, we we do not have a lot of large single source supplies.
No, well, my 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 question, my overarching question was, is EverSource going to in their filing? Um, which requires um. EverSource to provide an analysis of the need for the gas facility. In that analysis. Will you be including an evaluation of the risk to risk of loss, the risk of disability to the Memorial Bridge Line?
So there will be in our EFSB filing, and maybe Eric could could jump in a little bit, there will be a lot of information. In the EFSB filing as to why we're doing this and the risk we're trying to mitigate. So there will be a lot in the filing on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving along, so I I this should be, this should be an easier question to answer. Is the new pipeline being constructed to account for redundancy related to concerns about um loss of service on a line? Or or to account for increased demand?
I can take this one, Mark, unless you you want to jump in.
Go ahead, Rich, you got it.
So the line, we we have done system modeling on on our system uh for sizing this new line and establishing. You know, the size of the pipe and the and the pressure. And it's being sized, certainly not for expansion, it's being sized to match what capacity we need. Uh, on the west side of the Connecticut River. And in fact, with our um with our existing agreement with. Uh, Tennessee Gas, uh that was approved by the DPU. We can actually not take any additional gas beyond what we're um what we're taking currently. So we're 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 already limited by our supply contracts. Of course, there is a, there is a some um language or or there is a forecasted plan for. New customer additions, but ultimately, this project, i- it does not increase the amount of gas that we can. Supply to our customers.
So is a redundancy? Redundancy, okay, thank you.
It is.
And actually, just to clarify, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we we try, and I've used it a couple of times myself, and I'm not an English major, but um. We try to say redundancy, it's um it's for resiliency. And also, um, it's my understanding that any additional gas to this um to this area would require an additional approval by DPU.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. So I I do want to, um, because with regard to, you know, the the threat of loss. Certain facilities, you know, we still don't have, um, you know. Sources that are identified as to, you know, what might cause a loss, tornadoes, hurricanes, earthquakes, mechanical failures. Um. Is that is that kind of the the universe of of threats to the to a line or to a a regular station or a gate station?
It is, and it includes mechanical failures as well as third party damage. So um other contractors, other excavators that could be digging in the area if they were to inadvertently strike the line and damage it. But yeah, that is that is essentially the universe of of risk.
Yeah, other other types of risk to that too could be, um, since it's a steel line, could be weld failure. Um, I've seen, you know, occasional weld failures occur. Um, you know, in addition to that, um, some type of an event that caused significant undermining. Um, of the steel main, you know, that happened a couple of years back with some of the flooding. That went on in New York State where, you know, pipelines are actually ruptured or severed because of. You know, e- excessive ground movement due to, you know, excessive erosion with with flooding. So those are two other, you know, avenues that could cause a major issue.
And are you are you equally concerned with um damage or loss to the Agawam Gate Station? And the Bliss Street Regulator Station as you are the Memorial Bridge Line?
We are concerned with with the, you know, those stations and the operation of those stations. Uh, certainly, our our gate stations and our Bliss Street Station are some of our most critical regulator facilities. We're constantly. Inspecting them, constantly maintaining them. Um, our technicians are are always monitoring the station and. They are monitored in addition, if they're monitored remotely by Gas Control in South Borough, Massachusetts. Um, in terms, in in regards to the Bliss Street Station. Um, this this question did come up during our open houses. In regards to, you know, if we're if we're installing this new line to the Bliss Street Station, are there existing concerns? Or or are we creating another single point of failure? And the answer is that um this would be an engineering uh consideration for in the design of any of the. New facilities that we install on that site. There are certain considerations that we can uh put in place, whether it be hardened structures, you know, concrete structures that mitigate. Um, some of those single points of failure, uh certainly. Physical separation of any of the new and existing facilities, um something we're. Were required actually by federal code to look at. Or implement, uh rather. Um, in addition, we're we're also looking at uh putting any new facilities. Actually below ground, so further separate and, you know, further harden the site from any single point of failure.
Was it fair to say you're not really concerned about um, you know, a third party damage or a mechanical failure or some natural disaster? For the Bliss Street Station?
Uh, I'm not, I'm, we're not, we're not so much concerned over uh third party damage to the station. It's a controlled facility. It's a secure site uh that we control within within the perimeter of the station itself, but. Um, certainly, the the Agawam Facility, um, as well as the Bliss Street Facility. Um, could be could be impacted by some sort of natural event, but there are significant. Redundancies in place at the existing sites. I'm sorry.
Uh, like you said, there are there's existing redundancies at those facilities and I just.
So the equipment itself is configured in such a way that um single points of failure are are not expected. That's essentially, that's essentially the uh, you know, the foundation of 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 the of the of that issue. Mark, if you want to jump in on on the configuration, you can.
Sure, um, you know, the way we mitigate risk at at uh our gate stations and our um district regulators like Bliss. We would have um redundant redundant runs, so multiple runs and in gate station cases. We'll usually have a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary to give us, um, you know, three backups. Um, in addition, we have separation of facilities through concrete walls um to protect for, you know, overpressure protection. Um, places like Bliss, a lot of times what we do is we'll have, again, separation of facilities. Uh, through a concrete wall or uh in a lot of cases, put in underground vaults. That um will create, you know, a second set of facilities outside of a building. Which can also mitigate risk. So we have inherent designs that we'll put in place that will mitigate the risk at the stations. You know, to allow for redundancy for, you know, a whole host of different things that could happen. Again, we build those designs in by lessons learned over the years and best practice design and, you know, looking at events that have happened to um. You know, creatively design around those types of issues.
So both pipes, the Memorial Bridge Line and the proposed Long Meadow Line, would they both end up? Um, going through the Bliss Street Station, is that right?
They would go through that property. They would be independent pieces of pipe with independent sets of pressure regulators, but they would go through the same footprint.
So is it possible that the Bliss Street Station could uh endure a loss? Either from a third party, from a natural disaster, from, you know, a a wrongdoer? Is it possible that you could have a total loss of the Bliss Street Station?
Yeah, I think that's could happen at any station, um, but again, that's remote if we design it with those features in place. So again, mitigating the risk and, you know, designing those as separate redundant type runs.
And what would happen if if that that happened at the Bliss Street Station?
Well, if we separate the facilities properly, we mitigate that risk of having everything in one building. Um, on one set of runs, right? So we're creating some independence here.
Uh, if if the whole station is, there's a, there's a loss of a station, the whole station, how would that impact service to? Ratepayers on the east side of the river?
Yeah, what I've, what kind of event are you are we talking about? Cause. Again, we would, we would design so that they would be on the same footprint, but they're separate facilities, if that makes sense.
Are you saying that there's no event that could totally take out the Bliss Street Station? And I don't know, I'm 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 just asking.
I think any event that would take it out would be would be very, very remote. If we stick to our design that we're talking about here with independent facilities and independent pipes.
Alright, backing up further west on the existing gas line. Only one pipe supplies the Agawam Compressor Station and thus EverSource's Western Mass service area. Considering there's no redundancy for that line, why aren't there plans to create redundancy for that primary pipeline? So and so you were talking about single sources, right? And from what we've looked at, you know, the maps in Western Mass, it seems like there are a lot of single source supply lines. In fact, redundancy lines seem to be the the extreme minority, certainly not not. Um, and so, you know, the question is, how is? The 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 micro question is, how is how is this situation with the Memorial Bridge Line unique? And kind of the 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 more um macro question is, you know. Isn't the same risk of the line that carries, you know, the gas from New York to the Agawam Compressor Station? And the line that carries the the gas from the Agawam Compressor Station to the Agawam Gate Station, isn't it all subject to the same level of risk? Because it's all single supply?
Right, and uh so, Mr. Chair, I'll I'll take this question. Uh, we don't want to speak um to what TGP has. And don't want to speak about their system and and they um want to have uh resiliency built in. What I can speak to is, I I said it maybe not eloquently earlier in my presentation. You know, the green line is a simple depiction of TGP's system. Uh, there are. At at points, I don't know if it's all the way through or at certain points, but they've done strategic engineering as well. Those lines are doubled up and there is redundancy and there's separate actually supply, that's a sip, that's a very simple drawing that shows like from west to east. But there's additional supply coming in along that line and those line or that line is actually lines. In certain areas, I don't know to what extent. I know um with Mark and Rich being um more on the operation side. They probably a better idea, but it it's really not our place to to comment on what um Tennessee Gas Pipeline has. But um just to to uh allay your fears or your concerns a little bit, there there are double lines in there and other redund- uh not redundancies, resiliency built in.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. In October two thousand seventeen and October two thousand and nineteen. Columbia Gas promulgated informational materials for this project. I have them here if if I need to share my screen. And they described this project as, quote, "A new point of delivery installed in a non-residential area in Long Meadow." Is this still your stated position?
Tell you what, um, I'll I'll take that one and um. You're not gonna like the answer, but um that that's, I I can't comment on what um Columbia Gas has has published and as a um company statement. I can get back to you, um, Mr. Chair on that, but um we weren't prepared for that question. I wasn't.
Well, um, um, we're asking if EverSource has adopted Columbia Gas's opinion. That the new point of delivery will be installed in a non-residential area.
And again, from a from a corporate, as you're well aware, uh, Mr. Strange, that um EverSource is roughly eight thousand nine hundred employees. Uh, I'm just one of them and there's a couple other here on the call with us. Um, there, as far as a corporate position and where um, you know, the the company has an opinion or or a statement to make. That that hasn't been made, so I I can't go there.
So who who would who would have the authority to make that decision?
And 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 I can get back to you, um, Chairman, at at some later time. I don't have that here now. I I'm.
How long would it take for you to get back to us?
So I'll I'll get back to you in a in a week, sir.
In a week, okay. November twenty second, I'll hold you that, Joe.
I know you will.
Um, so I'm I'm assuming the same answer for the next question, so I'll just get right to it. Those same materials state that the proposed expansion line would support, quote, "existing and future growth." Is it still your stated position that the proposed uh Long Meadow Line would support existing and future growth?
And uh and again, and and you're, you've got us, um, you've got me personally over barrel at the moment, but um. As far as it's supporting it, I don't know about that, but I know the intent and the design and what we're doing here has nothing to do with growth. And everything to do with um redundancy. But um, tell you what, if you um after this meeting, uh, Mr. Chair. If you take that um that piece there, that comment and the other one, and you forward that to me, I can get, you know, um. We have people in corporate communications that this is what they do.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Moving right along, EverSource has stated that this expansion line is necessary to provide redundancy for fifty eight thousand gas customers. Eighteen thousand customers on the west side of the river are served by the Agawam Gate Station. And forty thousand customers on the east side of the river serve by Memorial Bridge Line. If the Agawam Gate Station became disabled, how many customers would lose their gas service?
I'll take that, so fifty eight thousand, you're correct. And that's something, I I think we talked about that in the slide presentation.
Uh, and if the Memorial Bridge Line became disabled, how many customers customers would lose their gas service?
And then the folks on the east side, and that's why bringing an independent, separate um line up on the east side of the Connecticut River. Would allow us to supply the forty thousand on the east side, and if there's something at the Agawam Gate Station, the other eighteen on the west side.
Okay, thank you. And if the uh, here's the curve ball for you. If the Bliss Street Station became disabled, how many customers would lose their? If the Bliss Street Station became disabled, how many customers would lose their gas service?
I can take this one, Joe. So with the, the existing configuration of the Bliss Street Station being a single station, so. Just to clarify, is it currently a single station within one perimeter? Any future plans we have would be two separate and distinct stations within that perimeter. It would be safe to su- to assume at this time that the outage figures would be similar. If the, if the current Bliss Street Station were to be, uh, disabled.
Like fifty-eight thousand, you're saying?
Uh, forty thousand, forty thousand. But again, to clarify, any, any additional facilities, um, that we add to that perimeter would be. Would be resilient to any single point of failure.
Got it. The cost of this project has been presented as ranging from twenty-two to thirty-two million dollars. Yet EverSource's own September first filing with the state puts the cost at over forty million dollars with thirty-seven million dollars being expended in twenty twenty-three. How do you reconcile previous statements of total cost? Being twenty-two and between twenty-two and thirty-two million, but the cost described in the September first filing, which is over forty million dollars?
Yes, this is, um, an issue that we've been, uh, working through as we develop our filing. Where it, it, it is an estimate, it's an estimated figure. Um, and it's based on historical, uh, costs that we've experienced on similar projects. We are in a situation where, um, over time, project costs have been increasing. We've seen a significant rise in the cost of, uh, steel, which is a significant contributor to, to what our project costs would be for this project. It's just a tremendous quantity of steel that we would be utilizing. So it, it, it's, it's a combination of economic factors that are changing as well as us working to better refine our estimates.
Makes sense. Okay, moving right along. Tennessee Gas's easement with the Long Meadow Country Club specifically states that they. Quote, "Shall be in compliance with any and all applicable federal, state and local statutes." EverSource specifically stated that it intends to ask the state to override our local bylaw. Prohibiting construction of any industrial gas facility in residential zones. Given the Long Meadow bylaw and Tennessee Gas's pledge to honor local bylaws. How does EverSource justify asking the state to grant you an exemption?
All right, I can take that. Um, so the, so this is, uh, an instance where TGP permitted its portion of the project. Um, and EverSource is permitting its portion of the project of the POD. Um, and so, as you know, as you've indicated, TGP is proceeding, um, is proceeded federally with, with a federal, federal permit. Um, EverSource has to seek, um, its state and local permits that it's required to get. Um, as you know, the, um, Long Meadow zoning code does not, um, allow that this use in this district. Um, and the Long Meadow Zoning Board, um, is not authorized to issue use variances. Um, so we cannot go locally for our, um, zoning relief that we require, uh, to build the. Three buildings in the POD that EverSource would own and operate. Um, Chapter forty-eight does allow the Department of Public Utilities to issue zoning exemptions. Um, to public utilities, um, under certain circumstances. And so that's what we will be, um, that's what we will be proceeding under. We will be filing that petition, uh, with the DPU at the same time as we file our EFSB petition.
Thank you. Okay. How many feet of pipeline is installed at a single time?
I can take this one. Um, it depends on, it depends on the area. Uh, so if crews are in, you know, a rather open stretch of road. Uh, that has very, you know, very few utility crossings, whether it be a water line or sewer line or something like that. They could expect to see upwards of, um, a hundred feet to perhaps even a hundred and twenty feet. On a, on a very good day of, of sixteen inch steel installed. However, if we're talking about, uh, complicated intersection that has a lot of utilities, we see, we see that there are. You know, uh, in, in the intersection areas of the utility density increases. Crews would be working across over those utilities and we might see between twenty feet to forty feet a day. Um, so what, what that results in for the customers is between, um, you know, they could expect to see the crew in front of their house between. One to two days and at the most in an intersection, perhaps four days.
That was my next question. Okay, um, so how many, and, and just, just roughly, how many sections of pipe would it take to, to? Complete the installation from the point of delivery at LCC to, um, let's go all the way to the Bliss Street Station?
Okay, um. This one I would have to calculate. It's. This is a challenging calculation, um, being that it's, we have four different routes, all of varying lengths. But each section is between twenty and forty feet. Um, so it would be a pretty reasonably straightforward calculation just to divide the, the length. So for example, you would look at, um, five point four miles and this is, this is very high level. So five point four. Is approximately twenty-eight thousand feet, uh, assuming an average section length of thirty feet. We could see potentially nine hundred and fifty. Those are very, very, very quick back of the napkin.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I appreciate you doing that. So, so how, how long, I guess, you know, how, how long is this kind of typically built?
Uh, it would take between, uh, six months to a year. Uh, and that's, that's a, that's a factor of how many crews we can mobilize. Um, we, we are seeing situations with our contractors where we're, um. We're not able to get perhaps the number of crews that we would, we would like to see, so. We can only really give you a range, um, so the range would be six, six months to a year. Go ahead.
I have a little something, Mr. Chair, is, um, so that depends, as I showed the slide with all the local permits. So once we get to local permitting, you know, there may be other restrictions. If, if it does, one, if the proposed project goes forward. Um, if we do the, um, say, uh, I ninety-one option, you know, mass DOT, they may have, um. Con, uh, restrictions, if you will, like nighttime only or something like that. And, and yourself, your own. Um, DPW, there may be, you know, during certain hours, so. Uh, please give us a fair amount of latitude with those estimates. I mean, it's one to two construction seasons, give or take.
Sure. You know, our, our biggest concern is that it is really difficult to get out of Long Meadow if there's any bottleneck. Um, and this is going to be a year-long bottleneck, which means traffic is going to be backed up. All throughout town for a year. That's, that's a significant factor in this, particularly when you're on the north side of town. And if you have, you have any rubbernecking, you know, and, and, um, you know, the, the ninety-one off ramp, you're backed up all the way into Connecticut. Right?
Understood. And, um, as you know, Mr. Strange, I'm, I'm the community relations specialist for the town and, you know, if this goes forward and, and we start construction, you know. That's my job and, and I don't want to hear it. So, you know, I want to make it as seamless. It won't be seamless, but as. Least painful as possible, and that's why I'm here, Mr. Chair.
And, and I would say, Mr. Chairman, it's very common for us when we have large projects like this. Joe and I do it quite often where we get in and have pre-construction meetings. You know, talking about time sequence and, you know, talking about what hours we can work and, and trying to refine that. Because we want to, you know, make the minimal impact on the community. So those discussions would occur upfront of any construction starting.
I think the traffic management plan, that'd be part of your GPW permitting, I would imagine.
Customer contacts and, and a lot of, a lot of facets of that to make sure that, you know. We have commitments around the construction schedule, we have commitments around the community and, and customers and, um, you know, hit those deliverables.
Thank you. Uh, next question. What is EverSource's rate of return on new gas pipelines?
So, um, I'll take this one and, um, I answered it the other night on, um, our open house and. Per, um, the Department of Public Utilities, um, approval, and I, I might have misspoke earlier in the week where I said it was, um, every. Um, uh, every utility, but I do believe that even, even amongst EverSource, our. EverSource gas at Massachusetts compared to our N-Star compared to other EverSource territories, it's different. But, um, as approved by the Department of Public Utilities, um, if it should be, um, deemed prudent. You know, our investment by the DPU, the, um, the current rate of return is nine point seven percent.
And is that on the, on the cost of the project or the investment in the project? What, what is that? What is the nine point seven percent based upon?
And I'm not as, uh, well versed on this. I think Rich might have, if you, or Richard Mark may have a little more info on this.
I'm also not tremendously well versed on, on the rate of return, but it is something we could look into and get you some better details.
You guys don't know how much money this is worth?
We've, we've done some, we've done some numbers as far as how much the project would cost. Uh, we've also ran some numbers as far as what the typical impact would be to, to our customers. Uh, kind of foreseeing that that would be an important question. Uh, but we have not dug into, you know, more of the rate of return issues. Again, it's, it's not, it, this project is not. Kind of grounded in, in making a return on an, an investment. It's not grounded in, uh, you know, shareholder returns. It's about reliability.
But there is a ten percent rate of return, right?
And we are, we are regulated, Mr. Chair, so I mean, that's, um, and it will be, you know, litigated in a future, you know, rate case. And, um, but, but it's, it's per regulation.
So my, so Joe, my only question is, it's nine point seven percent of what? And I'll, I'll put that in with, with your, the other questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I will get back to you on that. That, that I can definitely get back to. There are people that know that. I'm just, um, I have my, I have my cheat sheet, but it's not that in-depth.
I appreciate your time. Okay, considering the, um, let's see. Considering the risk of loss of the Memorial Bridge Line and the Bliss Street Station. Has EverSource evaluated an option that would create a new POD elsewhere on the east side of the river? That's not located in a residential neighborhood or so close to an elementary school. That connects the existing POD in East Long Meadow to some point north.
Yeah, we have, we have looked at, uh, some alternative options, um, in the area of. Couple of options in these, in Long Meadow and certainly the existing site in East Long Meadow. And we have applied our, a, a scoring system, a quantitative, quantitative scoring system to those alternatives. That includes the necessity to run, um, the upstream piping, which would be the Tennessee gas piping. And we have validated that the, the existing choice, when we, when we look at the impacts to residents, when we look at the environmental impacts. Um, indicate that the existing choice on Hazard Bill Road is, is the ideal choice. In regards to the East Long Meadow site, um, there currently is just not sufficient room on the existing, uh, property. Um, given, given the fact that we have so much equipment installed over there already. Uh, we just can't accommodate any additional facilities at that site.
Could you go the new one?
We, and, um. I'll say it's, um, so I know it was examined and, um, it was scored. And there's a bunch of wetlands, other environmental impacts. And I do believe that, and just the, um, the four routes that I showed and using the POD. Um, in the slides earlier, that's not the only component of submission to the EFSB. All, I think all of our, all the things we've looked at will be part of that. And just when we scored it, weighted it and, you know, looked at everything, those are the, those are the four best.
Okay. Um, okay. As previously mentioned, this new meter station and expansion line would be in close proximity to Wolf Swamp Road School. What if any considerations have been made to protect this vulnerable population?
I, I can answer that one. Um. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, the, the site, um, as we talked about earlier, monitored twenty-four seven. Um. Viewed by our gas control system. Um, I did want to say that there, we have at our stations minimum. Weekly inspections of the station. Um, we have, you know, annual maintenances, full maintenances, full tear downs of the station. This particular station, um, is going to have state-of-the-art, um. Gate station type equipment in it. So we'll have, um, overpressure protection. We'll have tertiary slam shut, um, shut off remotely from our gas control system. Um, we'll also have gas detection inside the buildings that can be, uh, go back to our SCADA. And allow for response to the station. Um, in addition to that, we're, we're using some efficient type equipment in there. One of them is on our odorization system. We're moving to a new technology of electric pumps, state-of-the-art technology, no emissions. Um, as you know, we have to heat the gas as we do pressure cuts. We lose seven degrees per hundred PSI of pressure cut, so we have to heat the gas to keep it above thirty-two degrees. We're using high efficiency heating equipment in there. Um, and again, you know, I think I'll just summarize by saying, you know, fully monitored, um. Fully checked by our maintenance people with boots on the ground. And, um, you know, really building in state-of-the-art protection for the facility.
How close is the nearest, you know, emergency responder, EverSource emergency responder?
So they work three shifts out of the Roosevelt Ave office. So, uh, they are on shift all the time. We have our service techs. Our first responder would be a service tech if we had an issue that needed response. Um, we would then call out, um, an INR tech, instrument repair tech, which are the ones that maintain the stations. So we would have a first responder which would stand by. Uh, those technicians are all local to the district. And they do on-call, so they're on-call twenty-four seven with vehicles at their homes for local response.
And Mr. Chair, um, it's probably important to note it, to note, excuse me, that, um. The, um, the SCADA and the operators and the folks that are monitoring these remotely. It's true, they're currently in Ohio. That's part of the, uh, transition from Columbia Gas to EverSource. But I think it's first quarter or second quarter, two, twenty-two mark, that, um, we'll have our. Local, Massachusetts local SCADA system and technicians there. And also it's, um, and I know this, this won't carry any weight with this group, but, um, a, um, a pointed delivery system, it's not. It's not, uh, completely unique and it's not, um. Uh, they're not all just out in the middle of nowhere. We're actually starting construction in Cambridge, Massachusetts right now. Of a pointed delivery system, a gas POD in a very, you know, it's, it's a, it's a crowded neighborhood and. Just, and we went through all the permitting there and all these similar discussions. And, um, you know, it's just, it's very high-tech, it's very safe. It's not, it's not going to make you feel any better, but just, um, that. They do go up in, you know, densely populated areas.
Was Cambridge as nice to you as we've been?
I was not privileged to be part of the Cambridge discussions earlier, so, but, but thanks for asking, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I would add to Joe's comments is our, our dispatch center has already moved to Massachusetts in July. So any dispatching, um, from our service technicians and callouts. Uh, would be done from Mass. And then as Joe said, in February of twenty twenty-two. We are in the process of building the SCADA system, doing our point-to-point checks. And that will officially transfer over in February of twenty twenty-two. That will mean every piece of the operation is now in Massachusetts and we will no longer be connected to Ohio. At Nice Horson anyway.
Good to know.
And I would just like to add about, uh, there was a question from one of the abutters about noise. Um, with the POD, it is something we've, we've looked at. We've conducted some noise studies. We're going to be continuing to. Conduct additional noise studies as we move closer to design, but all of our facilities will be installed within. move closer to design. But all of our facilities will be installed within buildings that are designed for noise abatement. So we're really working to reduce how much noise our, our customers and the residents in the area are going to be able to, to hear.
Thank you. Next question. Does Eversource intend to come before local commissions and boards, like the planning board, ZBA, or historical commission for the construction of the buildings proposed at Long Meadow Country Club or the new pipeline itself?
And I know whatever local permits we need, I'm not sure. And actually, I owe a phone call to your building inspector. I know whatever local permits we're required to get, we will be in front of, you know, Long Meadow, different boards and what have you. I'm not sure if we do wind up in front of the planning board or, or building. But you know, if we're required to do so, Mr. Strange, we certainly will.
So you guys are going to seek an exemption to the zoning, but not from the local permitting?
And now with your follow-up question, I'm in, just about over my head. And there she is. Thank you, Eric, if you can help me out here.
Yeah. So some of those provisions are in the zoning code. And so subject to DPU zoning exemption authority for, you know, locals, local permitting processes that are not in the zoning code, we would certainly be seeking whatever local permits that we need. But as Joe indicated, we're, we will be setting up a meeting with the building inspector soon to go over all of this in terms of what zoning provisions we believe apply, what would be included in our petition, and just to have an open dialogue about that.
So it sounds like to me that you're, you're planning on skipping planning board or ZBA, whatever it is, and going straight to the building inspector?
Well, no, we'll, we'll be consulting with the building inspector prior to filing our zoning exemption petition. And anything that is within the zoning code will be included in that zoning exemption petition. And so if there are, and there are local provisions for site plan and other, that fall within zoning, because the town zoning code prohibits it, we would be considering all of this as part of the zoning exemption petition at the DPU.
So yes.
For anything zoning related, we'll be going to the DPU. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. What about like historical commission? Because it goes right, it goes through our historical district?
Okay. So, and so that for, for anything Eversource related that requires MHC, and there are pieces of the project that do, we will be doing that. We can't, you know, TGP handled their permitting for their facilities federally and they got, they did their MIPA process with MHC. So that, that's kind of a separate piece. But for Eversource's aspect of it, we will secure all necessary permits, including any, anything historical that is required.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Just a couple more. How is this new pipeline consistent with the recent net zero roadmap legislation?
So when we had issues, so I think Nikki Bruno, who was our specialist in this area, will respond to that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Strange. So right now, you may be aware, I know some folks on your council are participating in the future of gas proceeding that's currently underway with the BPU, where all of the LDCs, the gas local contribution companies are participating. And what we're doing there is trying to understand what alternatives, what decarbonization alternatives we can take and administer in a revised business plan, which is the ultimate deliverable due to the DPU in this upcoming March. So as Mark and, and Richard and Joe have been talking through, the present day need for reliability is what this project addresses. The long-term vision and plan to decarbonize and meet the state's mandates is currently underway. But I will speak too, because this is what I'm trying to investigate as well. You know, there are decarbonized options in addition to electrification that we can offer. And again, I think it's a, it's a place where there's technology advances that are happening and where folks need to understand the, the technology and kind of do some more research and design. But certainly there's renewable natural gas that can be transported fairly easy today, provided we have the supply to transport in the existing assets. So this pipe that we would be putting in could theoretically carry that. And certain sources of renewable natural gas can actually be carbon negative, depending on where, where you get it from. Something like hydrogen is much further down the line. We have a lot of research and design to go on that. But again, eventually if there's a place for that in our portfolio, we would want to investigate that, given the infrastructure underground. And then like Joe had mentioned, the geothermal effort that we're, the pilot that we're undergoing in our N-Star gas service territory is one that I'm heading up. And so we're trying to test that technology now at utility scale. We know that folks have geothermal heat pumps in their homes today, but it's kind of novel what we're doing. Actually, it's kind of first in the nation because we haven't really done it connected to other buildings. So again, we don't know if that, we have to test that out, make sure it's fiscally responsible for our customers, make sure it provides the customers what they want and need for heating and cooling. And then also, you know, we understand that it provides environmental value. But those are all different types of decarbonization alternatives that are playing out in the DPU proceeding. And, and more to come, I'm happy to provide the website too, where folks can get more involved if they so choose.
You know, I guess kind of the, the layperson's, you know, response to this question and those answers is, how can Eversource continue to install new gas pipelines and still meet the 2030 and 2050 benchmarks?
Sure. So I'll say this a little bit differently than before. But, you know, again, I think what we're trying to address here is reliability. And that's, that's a hard, I'll admit it. It's a hard concept to understand. But I know in, in some people's minds, it means different things. To us at the utility, that means providing the service that folks need when they need it. And so what we have to understand is a little bit more on the power grid, what's going on in the electric, on the electric side. And what's beneficial, I think, about being a dual utility is that our electric side is proposing projects all the time to build out that infrastructure to support the electric needs. So when we think about something like electrification, air source heat pumps in homes, that's something where we actually just filed as a company our three-year plan for energy efficiency. We believe in that technology. But there has to be the associated build out with that on the electric side. So today, if something happens, we would be leaving a vulnerable population without heating and cooling, especially heating in the winter. And when folks are out in the cold, so to speak, it has, you know, there's a human health issue there. There's a safety issue there. So we want to move to a more decarbonized state for sure. Which, like I said, we're trying to figure that out through the docket, but those solutions aren't at hand or built out at scale today to provide en masse. We're working on that. Our electric side is working on that as well. But again, for today's present day need, we're not there yet.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, Nikki and I talk a lot. And, you know, just from an operator's perspective, you know, we're an energy company. We know there's a lot of great technologies coming at us. But we're looking at it as, you know, we have this risk now and the obligation to serve the customer. So we're trying to balance, we got to address the risk now and also what's coming at us with future energy options and balancing that all the time. So, you know, that's, that's something we talk about very actively inside the company. And, you know, we look forward to the future. But again, you know, as operators, we need to really put our customers first and really address the risk.
Yeah, that's, that's understandable. It can't be an easy balance. Just an editorial comment, I would love to see, you know, some of this state federal money being used in the way of infrastructure to help you get, get, you know, all these other decarbonization, electrification, geothermal, hydrogen options, whatever they are, up to speed. So, you know, that, that transition can happen sooner than later. I'll leave that there.
Thank you.
Next question. This is from Chief Dearborn. This project has been sold as increasing the reliability of the gas supply to Long Meadow. However, in review of the maps provided by Eversource, only a small section of Long Meadow will benefit from this project. Is there any plan to increase the gas reliability for the rest of Long Meadow? Or does it already exist without this project?
We believe that it, I can, I can tell that one. So based on the current system configuration, we do believe that there's existing reliability for the, the greater Long Meadow population. We've, we've looked at the numbers. It's about 15% of the Long Meadow customer, gas customer base that would potentially be impacted by an outage. But the, the remainder, or the remainder of those customers, we do believe has, has sufficient redundancy. Of course, we're always working to improve our systems. We have a number of GSET projects planned for Long Meadow. We're looking at, you know, continuing our cast iron and bare steel replacement programs in the town. And it's, it's just something that we're, we're always looking at enhancing the system and making it more reliable and safe.
So where, where would a failure need to occur in order for, you know, eighty, the other 85% of Long Meadow to stop getting their gas service? And where, where's the pinch point for, for, for Long Meadow?
Yeah, that's a tremendously difficult question for me to answer on the spot here. It would have to be in multiple locations. Just thinking off the cuff, I can, I can look at, into that more, just for your own, you know, risk analysis for your, for planning purposes. That is something I think maybe we should look into.
If you, if you, I only follow up on this is because this is from the fire chief. So, you know, I think it'd be helpful if you could get that information.
Right. And, and I'll just step in a little bit here, Mr. Chairman, in that from years past, I know Chief Dearborn's been around for a little while. I do believe that the gas industry, we used to share maps and where things were as far as the infrastructure. But then in a, in a post 9/11 world, we do a little less of that. But I, I think at a high level, I think Richard can share some of that stuff with, with the chief and with yourself, but we can't go into great detail.
Understood. Thank you for doing that. Okay. And I'm very excited. Last question from us. Also from Chief Dearborn. The three routes that seem to be preferred by Eversource all travel north on Shaker Road. These routes pass adjacent to the pond and dam at the Long Meadow Country Club. A dam at the country club is listed as a significant hazard dam according to the Mass Office of Dam Safety. Is there any consideration of this in the route selection relative to this dam or mitigations planned? The definition of a significant hazard dam is one that's located where failure may cause loss of life and damage to home, industrial or commercial facilities, so on and so forth. Again, from Chief Dearborn.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little bit out of my depth on that particular question. Unfortunately, we don't have our environmental consultant on the call who would be able to chime in on that specific issue. But it's, that's something I can look into and get an answer back to you.
And Mr. Chair, so I'll, I'll step in here in that we approached the chief almost a year ago, and he brought that to my attention, plus one, one other of my colleagues, my PDE, my boss. And we brought that back to the project team as early as like last, say, March or April. So even though Rich doesn't have that in front of him right now, that I know the team has received that information. And the feedback I got was, it was something they took into consideration. And if, if the line gets closer, it's, it's going to have an impact. That's something we've mitigated or we've talked about.
Thank you. Okeydoke. That's all the questions that we have for the moment. We're now going to open it up for resident questions and comments. Our first resident is Michelle Morantz. Reminder to all residents to please type your question and comment into the chat and we will call you on you in order. Please also remember to state your name and address for the record. Mike, can you please move Michelle into the meeting? Yes, we can.
All right. We're good to go. Good evening. My name is Michelle Morantz. I live at 117 Rugby Road and I'm chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group. As a member of this group of residents who are fighting the proposed gas expansion project, I'm aware of many reasons for our opposition. But tonight I'd like to focus on just one. The onerous cost that will be placed on Eversource ratepayers in order to finance this project. And the fact that this cost is not a fixed figure. Let me explain. At a Springfield City Council Subcommittee meeting in October, an Eversource spokesman admitted that the $30 million project mentioned in their presentation was in fact a $40 million figure. And when questions arose during an Eversource open house last week concerning the vulnerability of the Bliss Street Station, a supervisor suggests that quote unquote hardening the station might be a solution, one that could involve building part of the station underground. An extraordinary idea that probably wasn't factored into the $40 million cost recorded with the state months ago. Though Eversource did concede in the Springfield meeting that the ratepayer will be on the hook for that $40 million, a spokesman tried to sweeten that bitter pill by saying that the cost will be shared by all ratepayers statewide who live in Eversource service territories and wouldn't result in much more than an extra dollar and some change for each payer's monthly bill, as if that were the sole extent of projected costs for future Eversource construction projects. Due to this misinformation, my question to you tonight is, are you prepared to tell Eversource ratepayers that the actual amount of construction costs that they will be expected to bear is closer to $860 million? More than 20 times the $40 million figure that we've been given. And as you know, Eversource filed this $860 million figure with the state months ago in reference to the projected cost of work needed on Columbia Gas's infrastructure, which is now part of Eversource's service territories. Thank you.
So I can, I can address some of those cost discrepancies. And I do apologize for some of the earlier confusion, particularly during the Springfield Subcommittee meeting. I did misspeak unfortunately at that meeting where I failed to account for POD costs in our project, in our project estimate. So I, I certainly own that mistake and I can rectify it here. I'll just go into some of the costs of the various routes. Very quickly, I'll provide a range here. So the shortest route, this is Notice Variation 2, costs with the POD included are $32.5 million. And the longest route, which is the noticed alternative, is $44.6 million. As I did mention earlier in the meeting, those unfortunately are and will continue to be approximate numbers. And, you know, we're anticipating that this EFSP process will continue for a number of years. And, and it's expected that certainly those numbers will increase over time, especially if, you know, some of the, you know, supply issues continue with the cost of steel. But hopefully, I, hopefully that cleared up some of the discrepancy. That, those are our best numbers as of today.
Right. But, but what about the $860 million statewide? And I mean, I think that people, it's fair to the ratepayer and to the, the customer for them to realize that that is the projected amount of cost we are expected to bear as customers.
Yeah, that's certainly a, it's a, it's a big number.
And that's going to be, it's going to amount to more than two bucks a month.
Certainly, certainly. Yeah, that's certainly a big number. I'm not prepared to validate that exact number. But I do know that the total budget that EGMA projects for facility investments is, is considerable. And it's, that number sounds like it's in the order of magnitude of what I would expect to see. Again, I can't speak to the exact number at this time. But we're But we're uh we are always interested in eh, you know, the the maintenance component of our system as well as ongoing replacements of our priority infrastructure, which includes cast iron mains and bare steel mains um and leak prone mains. So that includes, I don't, I don't know exactly what that includes, but it includes a significant amount of investments across our system and across our territory.
I can help you out there, I can, I can help you out there a little bit, Rich. Um one, um uh good evening, Michelle, it's good to see you.
Nice to see you, Joe.
We we aren't, we're here now, so here we are. Um so that um that eight hundred and sixty million, uh Michelle, that is, um that doesn't include this project, that's we ever source and and actually all utilities. Uh we invest in our capital infrastructure, you know, to improve our system and negate leak prone pipe, leak prone pipe. And um and you know, and and improve our system and our safety liability to our customers. So um part of that, so that number, um this project, which this particular reliability project isn't in that that number.
Really? So it's even, it's even more money?
Well, cuz that's that's, so that's today, so that's something that um has been approved. Uh I I don't know the exact where that came from, but that is something that potentially the D P U has approved as a rate case for projects that have already been accomplished and deemed prudent. And this project as well, you know, we're doing for the reliability, you know, for today, for for folks in the next couple of years, hopefully if it gets done, then we'll go before the Department of Public Utilities, they'll determine if it's prudent and if that cost can be passed on to the ratepayers. Just wanna just kinda uh separate out that 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 is a big number. And tell you what, in a couple of years, there'll be another big number, and then that will have some of this project. But we're talking about the reliability project, you know, here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um thank you. Mike, you wanna bring in the next um resident?
All right, I'm moving in Tom Shay now. Hey, Tom, could you unmute yourself, please?
Yes. Do you have a question?
Oh, sorry, I was talking about Mr. Shay, who I just moved in.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm listening.
Mike, how about now?
Yes, we could hear you.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm using two different computers at the same time. Um so Joe, thanks for having this again. Um the November ninth one was a good give and take also. So um earlier, they, I think it's been confirmed, the Tennessee buildings and ancillary pipelines at the P O D are FERC regulated. So there's a blanket certificate of need and building permit. So that's gonna, the Tennessee gas, those are going in because they're FERC regulated. If the pipeline doesn't go in, there's prob- they will not put the P O D there, which is obvious. So then ever source buildings in the pipeline will need Long Meadow zoning approval, or I think it's been confirmed. You're probably gonna skip the Long Meadow process and go straight to the E S B, uh thus usurping the Long Meadow um government, if you will, and its taxpayers. So my question is, does ever source have any other compressor metering or industrial equipment in a residential neighborhood less than a hundred yards from residents and less than two hundred and twenty-five yards from a grammar school as you're proposing here? And if you do, where are they? And did ever source go to the Energy Facility Siting Board usurping local zoning laws as you're planning here? And then a third part of that, um earlier it was mentioned about the easement at Long Meadow Country Club. So as I said, the Tennessee's got FERC approval, ever source needs state approval. Um and it also provides in that easement that there would potentially be, at the time they were saying base state gas equipment. But what is the relationship between base state and ever source? Um you, are you paying them for part of that easement, or how does this work? So kinda a couple of parts to the question, I can repeat them if you want.
Joe, I can take the location ones if you like, at a couple of examples.
Mark is uh, Mark is unmuted, so let's start with Mark, please, thanks.
So yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Shay. Yeah, so just a couple of examples, we do have um a number of gate stations that uh are in um close proximity to homes and schools, just, you know, one, as an example, um our Cambridge site, which is gonna be newly constructed, is in, you know, the middle of downtown Cambridge. We also have one over in um in Cambridge called Brookford Street. That one also is in um in a neighborhood. We do have one um over um in um Dover, which is behind um a high school. So we do have, and there's numerous others out in our Connecticut territories. But you know, we do have them in uh residential neighborhoods, near businesses, um some near schools. And you know, we do successfully operate them. Um you know, we do work with the towns, the cities, the fire departments, you know, on training and, you know, being a good neighbor and, you know, operating them to the best of our ability to work within the community. So uh that's just a couple of examples of some of them.
I guess it'd be helpful if you could maybe get a list, short list of those to the Select Board, uh Mr. Strange, and people could uh maybe take a drive by those at their leisure. I'm pretty familiar with Dover, um pretty uh rural area. Um tough to find uh residences there, they're so spread out. But I think it'd be helpful if you got a list of those to people, so uh people can take a drive by those. And then um second part of that question, did you, in essence, go to the Energy Facility Siting Board in those cases and usurp local zoning laws? On any of those, sounded like Cambridge might have the most recent one?
So that one did not require e- an E F S B um requirement on that one.
The one that's not built yet?
That that did not fall under E F S B.
So you went to the Cambridge um zoning board, et cetera?
Yeah, I I'm not prepared to answer all the details on how that one was permitted, it was a couple of years ago.
Okay, we can make phone calls, no problem. And then last part of the question, I'm sorry, go ahead, Erica.
No, I, so I was just gonna say, it depends upon um the particular project that's involved and what that um particular loan zoning in in a municipality indicates. Um sometimes where, you know, utilities are permitted, you know, to to use a particular parcel in a particular way, they can seek whatever relief they need locally. Here, Long Meadow has prohibited it. Um so we cannot seek the relief that we need locally, and we were, we only have the option to go to the D P U. So in instances where, you know, there can be the choice, sometimes utilities go to the D P U, sometimes they they permit things locally, it uh it's very case specific, depends on the project and depends on the community.
Okay, I guess I'm surprised Cambridge would a lot, given Cambridge's uh reputation, I'm surprised they'd let a metering station in residential area. Third part of that question, um as I said, um L C C granted an easement to Tennessee Gas. And then there is, I think it's section eight of the easement, um describes the potential relationship with uh base state gas at the time. But how's this gonna work between base state and Tennessee? Are you paying them for, in essence, a sub easement? Or in essence, how are you getting your building and pipelines onto that property?
And um I'll I'll tell you, Tom, I'm I'm not sure if anybody on this call is prepared to answer that.
Okay, I asked Mr. Strange if you could add that to your list and if you could get back to us. Thank you. I'll uh I'll maybe come back for one more, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Mike, can you move the next uh resident in, please? All right, I'm moving in Frank Smith.
Hi. I'm assuming you can hear me?
We can hear you, Frank.
Okay, thank you, uh my name is Frank Smith, I live at twenty Green Willow Drive in Long Meadow. And I especially want to thank the Select Board for providing a forum to allow me to speak this evening. I'm going to share a personal story about two family members, followed by some facts, and then ask a couple of questions. By his fifth birthday, my younger stepson Mark had fifteen hospital admissions for acute respiratory distress, commonly referred to an asthma attack. Yes, I said fifteen hospital admissions. That doesn't count the number of times we rushed him to the emergency room in the middle of the night for inhalation therapy. Our doctor at the time told my wife and me that Mark's asthma was about as bad as it can get and still survive. My wife is also a severe asthmatic. Two years ago, complications from the flu triggered an asthma episode and severe respiratory distress that required her to be quarantined, and she spent nine days in a hospital. These experiences compel me to speak out against ever sources gas expansion project. Make no mistake, it is a gas expansion project. You have tried to make the case that if a tornado came through Springfield a few years ago and hit the Memorial Bridge, we had, would have been without gas. We've established that the bridge was hit and nothing happened. Further, the industrial metering station that you want to build in a residential neighborhood will emit methane gas twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, just like the one in Agawam. And I have infrared imagery from Gas Hunters National that proves it. This high pressure industrial facility would be located a few hundred feet from where my stepson lives and a few hundred feet from Wolf Swamp Elementary School where my grandchildren attend. It needs to be stated that the explosions that occurred in Merrimack Valley in Eastern Mass were not the result of fixing leaks. Investigations show that they were the result of a reliability project. You may try to convince this audience that that, that none of this is true, but I have proof that it is. I have thirty-plus years of management consulting experience. I'm very familiar with corporate speak. You use words like we're investigating, we're looking at hardening infrastructure. These are engineering considerations. This is a reliability project, or we're investigating new technologies. I submit that these statements are intended to lead the listener to infer that you intend to do something. I would ask why you continue to allow your Agawam station to emit methane if these technologies are available today. You speak of your goal of reaching net zero by a certain timeframe. Then you slip in one sentence to clarify that you are only referring to internal operations, not net zero carbon emissions resulting from the use of your product by the citizens of this state. Let me repeat that. When you refer to zero emissions, you're referring to internal operations only, not the use of your product by citizens of this state. All of this leads me to ask this question. Why would you seek to build an industrial metering station in a residential neighborhood that exposes my wife, son, and grandchildren to a continuous dose of methane gas and a catastrophic risk of explosion from poison fracked gas? And shouldn't your SCADA system, your supervisory control and data acquisition, shouldn't it be detecting the presence of methane gas in Agawam? Are we to believe that such a system would be working in Long Meadow as well? Thank you.
I'll um, one, uh thank you for your um for your questions and your comments, Mr. Smith. Um I'll I'll start with it, it was um seems multi um multifaceted there, and I'll hand some stuff off. But uh one, uh first, I'm I'm really sorry to hear about your uh your family member and and the asthma. And and just wanted to point out that the the purpose of this project is not to add a single new customer, but just to provide reliability to the existing fifty-eight thousand customers who choose to use natural gas. Um we're not expanding, we're not bringing more gas to the region, just trying to make sure that, you know, in the event of some some kind of issue, especially in the dead of winter, that we have another source to keep the heat on in people's homes. Um also, uh you'd be happy to know that um we are aggressively, since uh the acquisition of the Columbia Gas assets, uh we have been aggressively uh pursuing and eliminating, you know, grade two and grade three leaks. And um I'll let uh Mark Gonzalez talk to that, talk to that subject a little bit. Cuz you know, that is another source, um one of natural gas and and carbon based um gas in the environment. For one, for um environmental reasons, but also two, for health reasons, so we're aggressively uh pursuing that. I'll let uh Mark talk to that for just a bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your comments, and I echo Joe's concerns and, you know, our sympathies with with asthma. It's a, it's an awful um condition, and, you know, I have experienced it in my family and myself, so I do sympathize with that. Um I did wanna comment on a couple of things. One was on methane emissions at the P O D gate station. And then secondly, I wanna talk about, you know, leaks on our system for a couple of minutes. First, all of our gate stations in our entire system, including Agawam, have methane detection inside the buildings that are monitored twenty-four seven. And if there are the smallest leak at a gate station, and we measure that in L E L, lower explosive limit. So it's, you know, less than one percent gas and air, very small amounts. Um they'll alarm at twenty percent L E L. So we're able to respond, send a technician through a call out and investigate the leak and repair the leak. So leakage at the station um is not happening during normal operations. If there is an abnormal operation, we will immediately address it. Um the other thing that I do wanna talk about is the, there are technologies, um past technologies, for example, like an odorant pump. It's driven hydraulically by natural gas, because it's a fuel that's there to be able to use to compress a piston down. A very small amount on the back pressure of that will exhaust through a filter. And we're talking very minute amounts, you know, fractions of a cubic foot. Um as Richard talked about earlier, we're looking at new technologies that we will deploy that have electric pumps. And rather than have gas drive it, we now have electricity drive it. It eliminates that very small methane exhaust. Same thing on our regulators, on a regulator for pressure control, on a slam shut technology, it uses gas pressure to keep it open. If we have to hit that to shut If we have to hit that to shut the station down during an emergency, what will happen is that very small amount, again, fraction of a cubic foot, would exhaust through a filter and allow the valve to close through a spring. Again, Richard and I have, have technologies now where they are zero emissions. So even these very small amounts of emissions at the stations, we've eliminated those sources through technologies. Um, and just again, to clarify that we do not have methane leaking at our stations. We do have heaters at the gate stations that heat the natural gases we talked about earlier through a heat exchanger with high-efficiency heaters. Those do have, similar to home heaters or commercial heaters, those do have byproducts of the heater, which is typically CO2 and water vapor. But not natural gas, not methane. Um, the other thing that I did want to address is with our leakage. Again, we, we agree with everybody here that we want to reduce methane emissions. That's what our gas system enhancement program is all about, reducing leak-prone pipe, but also repairing leaks on our system. Um, last year in the Springfield District, when we started day-one operations in October of 2020, uh, we had a hundred and eighty-four leaks in the Springfield District. Um, as of today, we've got twenty-eight class-two leaks. We have made a really large push. We were seven hundred and sixty-four system-wide at EGMA. Um, we are now down under a hundred system-wide. Um, right now, in the city of Long Meadow, there are no class-two leaks. Um, Springfield is at an all-time low of nine, uh, where, you know, a majority of the leak-prone pipe exists. Um, so very, very responsive by our team. They've worked extremely hard to, again, you know, that's one of our, um, getting to, you know, carbon neutrality is to reduce our methane emissions through controlling and reducing leaks. So we do have a common, um, common goal here with everybody here is to reduce methane emissions and, you know, that's something we continue to do. Um, you can read it in Dynamic Risk Report, Eversource, previously N-Star. We've always been very focused on, in recent times, on our, on our leak reduction. So something that we'll continue to work on and, um, make sure that we meet the commitments that we set forth for, you know, for us as a company and you as a community.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Frank. Uh, Mike, next resident, please. All right, I just moved in Elaine.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Elaine and Jim Turtelot, sixty-four Prynwood Road in Long Meadow. Our question, our first question is, assuming this reliability project is necessary, which, which we do not at all agree, why not move that, uh, POD farther west down the TGP line? Move it away from some of the residents to which it is very close? And allow the line that I think you designated as purple or blue to carry it more cheaply to Bliss Street than tearing up all the streets in Long Meadow and Springfield? And if you can answer that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for that question. These are options that we have looked at. Um, I touched on it earlier in the call. Um, we evaluated, uh, four different options for the POD, one of which was in that western region, um, of Long Meadow, uh, but in, with our system, with our evaluation system, uh, it's a quantitative system. It's a scoring system that utilizes various factors. Um, residential, uh, homes in the area, environmental impacts, um, cost impacts. So we have looked at those options, and our scoring system has indicated that in that area of western Long Meadow, there's just tremendous environmental impacts for any options in that area. Um, there's a lot of wetlands in that, in that region, and so it, the scoring of those options indicated that they were not ideal, um, scenarios for us.
So you could actually provide the quantitative judgments on those environmental impacts. Could you compare them to the danger the citizens near the station will be put to? You know, it's, environment is fine, and I am an environmentalist. And I enjoy not only the nature, the flora, but also the fauna. And yes, that's a problem. But danger to people usually should, in the common sense evaluation of things, be more, taken more seriously than danger to the environment. And I wonder sometimes whether you folks in a corporation like Eversource let yourself be carried away with that minutia and not worry so much about Frank Smith's kids with asthma or a blow-up in the Merrimack Valley. And I'll grant you that you folks are going to try and do a safe job on putting this thing together. But so has every other complicated project usually been put together. Accidents still happen. And oftentimes, the consequences outweigh the benefits. And I think this is a prime example of that issue. Not to mention the financial part of this. And you're talking about forty million plus or minus. Plus two-point-seven million, unless that's included in the forty million. The TGP paid for this piece of land in Long Meadow. Now, if, if in fact, the number, and I believe it's correct, is nine-point-six-seven, all intents and purposes ten percent, that means you folks make a profit to be distributed to your shareholders in the extent of four million or so. So, you know, you can, I think you can understand why we as residents would at least be dubious, if not suspicious. You're conflicted already, at least your management is, making plenty of dough on this project, whether the safety benefit is great for Long Meadow or isn't. If you could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Turtelot, um, again, thanks for the, um, additional comments. And I'll just clarify something that Richard said is that, um, those additional sites we looked at, you know, even though we, Eversource, thought that the environmental impacts and that it didn't score as well, that is part of our submission to the EFSP, and they'll look at it as well, in addition to, you know, the comments we received at the, um, at our open houses. Um, this, I imagine, this can be part of our filing as well as part of our outreach, and during their public hearings and public comment. So, um, you know, as I said during the slide presentation, it's, it's ongoing. And just the feedback we're getting tonight, that's going to alter the scores. So we didn't, we didn't look at something and then turn our back on it. We have a number of options. We're going to move forward to the, um, EFSP.
I think that's great, Joe, that you're going to the EFSP with these things. The public suspicion, and in this case, it's not dubiousness, it's outright suspicion, is that this is all pretty much a set piece. That the DPU and EFSP have usual, what, ninety? You know better than I do. Ninety percent, ninety-five percent, or more, maybe a hundred percent of the time has allowed the fossil fuel industry, including gas, to have its way in regard to sites. So why would we be, you know, at all at ease and comfortable with this whole thing? That's, I think, the root of many of our questions and many of our suspicions. You know, and the money isn't, isn't a side issue either.
I can understand your concerns, um, uh, Jim, but, um, we, we have a goal. We're trying to improve the reliability to the fifty-eight thousand customers. And I can understand your concern. We're going to have to agree to disagree on this one.
Thanks for the answer, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jim. Mike, can you bring in the next resident, please? All right, I'm moving in Jeffrey.
Hello? Oh, hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. All right, unfortunately, I don't have a camera, uh, so you'll have to make do without. Um, first of all, I would just love, I, I'd just like to start, Joseph Mitchell. I do, I, I love that answer. Um, that's, that's just a classic answer. You know, I understand your concerns, but I've elected to ignore them. Um, but moving forward, I have a few notes here. Uh, my first point is, one of your holding companies, uh, Tennessee or whatever, this big tangled spaghetti mess of trusts you have, uh, said that this would be a non-residential project. I, I find that hilarious, given that it's less than fifty feet from the backyard fences of some of the people at the end of my street. Um, I guess they really loosely define residential, like if it's not built inside someone's house, then I guess it's not residential. You stated that, uh, your main concern with building it in the wetlands was environmental impact, but you also stated, not five minutes prior, that your stations had perfect zero-carbon records because of all the fancy technologies that you have there. So why would they have an environmental impact if you're already perfect at everything? There is one of these, uh, stations in East Long Meadow. I took a drive over there Saturday. Uh, Elizabeth spoke ages ago about, um, the experience. I just wanted to see if anything had changed. Uh, and I rolled down my window and it smelled like someone had left the pilot light out all day, and it sounded like a train was rolling past. Imagine living next to that. Constantly, just that constant noise, like good luck getting to sleep. And if you do get to sleep, imagine the headache when you wake up in the morning after breathing in gas all day. Now, any sensible person would want to get out of that situation, but no one's going to want to buy your house, so you're stuck there. I mean, this is just, like, for the people living right next to it, this is going to be a terrible situation if it gets built. Um, and I think that you should reconsider those, uh, alternative locations that don't put it, you know, within a stone's throw of someone's backyard. Going back all the way to the beginning problems, uh, of, uh, this being a redundancy. Um, I don't really have a question. I'm just speaking my mind. For, for this being a redundancy of some sort of bad weather event? I mean, the pipeline across the bridge survived being directly hit by an EF3 tornado. Uh, it survived the, uh, blizzard of 2011. I mean, what sort of event are we talking about? Like, is this, are we talking like a terrorist attack? Someone blows up the pipeline? I mean, someone could blow up the second pipeline, too. I mean, we should build a third pipeline for redundancy if both of them get blown up. Or at it, we should build a fourth in case all three of them. Like, is it really necessary? Because I think, like, if the pipeline can survive a tornado and this, this region doesn't really have serious earthquakes, I don't see the pipeline being disrupted by anything, um, by anything less than, you know, an attack or some sort of failure with the system. And if the pipe does fail, well, you, you repair the pipe. That's, that, that's it. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, Mike?
Uh, you, you're muted.
All right. Uh, Mike, can you, can you call in the next resident, please? Thanks, Jeffrey.
All right, I'm moving in Rocco. If you could please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Ann Rocco. I live on nineteen Hassettville Road, uh, right across from the maintenance house of the golf course. The reason we moved here because we believe the town of Long Meadow is a great place for raising a family. I, we currently, my husband and I have two children, one in high school and one in first grade at Wolf Swamp Road. When I have heard about the pipeline meter station potentially built right across from our home, it raised great concern, um, about everything, about safety, about the health of all of us. And also, I have many time have called Paul Healy, the town manager, to complain about the golf course, where they currently, they're not taking good care of their backyard. Um, their trees, their debris, their trash, and then they, they have their own people dropping off the dumpster one, two AM in the morning. Um, and their people start working at five AM in the morning, where in town they're not supposed to be there until seven-thirty in the morning. Why am I raising that point? Because if right now, they are not care or they not abide to their, to the, to the town where they, where they should consider other people, um, concerned, what is it going to be when this pipeline meter station is going to be there? Who's going to be taking care of that? And also, we like to be out and about, riding by, walking, walking to school. Um, and for this, it's harming our environment. This is needed, um, for this to happen. And this is an extension of something that we already have in our backyard and already have this in the town of East Long Meadow. Um, just like many of the residents have raised their voice before, I do have the same concern. Um, and it doesn't matter how much coating, sugar coating that you put on top of this, I could still not agree with your plan. Um, and I think it's, it, it none, not necessary, um, in our, um, backyard. That's it. I, I'm greatly concerned, and I really appreciate everybody on board and all of my neighbors that, who have the same concern and, and making it known. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocco. Did you have a question or did you just want, want to make that comment?
No, I just want to raise my concern.
Thank you for doing so.
Thank you. And my husband is...
Does your husband want to make a comment as well? Okay, uh, Mike, can you bring in the next resident, please?
All right, they should be in now.
Who is it?
The name on the Zoom says June. Moving June in now. There's a, there, there must be a delay or something. It's not allowing me to move her in.
Can you bring in a different resident? Are we, are we kind of?
I'll bring in the next person, uh, David. Sorry, some technical difficulties here. It's going smooth up until then.
I'm gonna read the questions. Okay, just so we can kind of move this along a little bit. And then if we, um, were able to bring people back in, um, let me know and, and they can pick up where I'm leaving off. Uh, but June's question, June was asking, what would the cost be to update the Memorial Bridge Pipeline? Are there any leaks on this route? Uh, you've mentioned several times that the line is seventy years old.
Thank you for the question. Um, I, I don't have any estimates for you currently as far as what the cost would be to replace that line. But ultimately, even if, even, even if the line were to be replaced, the, that single source of supply concern that we have with the existing system configuration would persist. So replacing that line, um, would not, would not address the reliability concern, unfortunately.
Thank you. Uh, David Morse asks, what about the risk to the Tennessee Pipeline? Isn't that a single source?
So we, we received that question on, on our open houses as well. And there, so there are components of the Tennessee Gas Line that have existing redundancies built in. Um, there are lengths of that line that have dual, dual pipelines. Um, however, this project does address risk on the Tennessee Gas Facility as well. The lateral that travels north from the main line, um, so again, going back to Joe's slide earlier, that main line travels, uh, west to east across Massachusetts. That main line, it does have redundant lines. However, the, the lateral that feeds our Agawam Gate Station is a single line. This project does address the reliability concern with that lateral.
Thank you for answering that. Um, so Antonio has a series of questions here. Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, one of his questions is, what can a tornado do to an underground pipeline? Can a tornado impact an underground pipeline?
I've, I've never encountered any, any details on that, but I would like to do some more research on that certainly to, to get a better answer for you. It's not something we've looked at.
I'm just looking at the questions. There's a lot of duplications in here. Uh, here's a question from June. Uh, who specifically suggested the Country Club as the site for this in, industrial meter station?
Um, going back to, um, earlier conversations with, with Tennessee Gas and some of the project history, um, back, you know, a few years back, unfortunately, we, we cannot comment on those early discussions that TGP was having with, uh, the Country Club. That's something, that's a question I think we should probably direct towards Tennessee Gas.
Okay. Um, Kimberly Barton has a comment. As an abutter on the preferred route and variation, uh, one, whose home is about a hundred feet from a perennial stream, which I am beholden to protect, I am of course concerned about the possibility that my property will be devalued by erosion on the riparian ridge by construction and creek and stormwater pollution. I am especially concerned about the environmental impact report that will be conducted and the steps in that process EverSource will undertake. I did read through the original TGP two sixty-one FERC draft application. Excuse me, there's ambiguity about whether, uh, what was then called the Long Meadow Meter Station, now called the Point of Delivery, was part of TGP two sixty-one. And at the point, FERC accepted the draft without requiring an additional environmental impact study beyond the one that was conducted in Agawam. Long Meadow's exceptional wetlands are extensive as it, as is its proximity to the Connecticut River. I am thus not only concerned about my own backyard, but also more broadly with wetland pollution.
Yeah, so as a component of the design and our, you know, our construction site mitigations that we're going to be putting in place, there's going to be a thorough evaluation, a thorough, um, erosion control plan, uh, dust plan, um, put in place. And those, those are all going to be a component of our environmental permits that we're going to be required to receive. Uh, so specifically around those, um, wetlands, around that stream crossing, there's going to be a significant amount of, uh, environmental protections put in place to, to avoid any, um, impacts to those resources.
Uh, Antonio asks, how, how can you make more profit if you're not adding more customers?
Yeah, so again, it, this project is not about profit. It's about, um, the company EverSource and, and the engineers, uh, with EverSource, looking at a reliability concern, looking at a system configuration that is not ideal and, and putting forth a plan to, to address that concern. So profit does not enter into this equation whatsoever.
And so also, uh, Mr. Chair, it's probably important to inform, uh, the person who asked the question that we're a regulated utility, so we're beholden to, um, you know, our customers, our ratepayers and to the Department of Public Utilities. You know, they, they require us to look at these things and, and they'll say whether it goes forward or not.
Okay. Um, so I think that we've, we've covered all the remaining questions. And comments that are, that are, um, that would be, uh, unique or original. Um, if any other residents have, you know, final questions that they want to ask, um, please type it into the chat now. Otherwise, we will, uh, we'll wrap up here with EverSource. Okay, I think we've come to that wonderful time where we have to say goodbye to our EverSource friends. Um, Joe and Rich and Richard and Mark, thank you guys so much and Erica and I'm forgetting somebody.
Nikki.
Uh, Nikki, thank you all so much for spending the time and, and dealing with our needling. This is really important to us, as you, as you know. Um, and we really care about, you know, um, you know, what's going on here and we're hoping to get more answers as we move forward. But thank you all very much for attending this evening.
Thank you. If I may say, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for having us and a reminder to yourself and, and the audience that this is just the first step. Uh, we appreciate your input and we appreciate your questions. And there's additional opportunities to be heard and, and the process is just starting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for the dialogue. Good night.
Okay, moving forward on the agenda. Do we have any residents left who want to make a comment on anything non-pipeline related? Please raise your hand and be heard. Anything?
I don't see anyone.
Okeydoke. Moving on to select board comments. Does anybody, any select board member have any comment? Art Gold.
Thanks. I, I just want to make a comment that our two-month water bills went out and were received in the last couple of weeks. I got a lot of emails from people about that. And for the most part, when I pointed out to people that these were two summer months, you know, August and September. People did a lot of irrigation. People say, gee, it's like seventy-five or eighty percent of my six-month water use. Fact is, they're right, because six, seventy-five or eight percent of their six-month water use because they're water using non-winter months. As somebody who's looked at a lot of water usage meter readings, excuse me, I just want to remind people that, you know, the best thing to do is not look at their last water meter bill, but the one before that, last summer. Take what they got, multiply it by three, so you see a kind of what the six months might be. And if there's still a problem, then they can contact the, the DPW. But I think a lot of people were kind of panicked and, you know, prematurely, I would say. So I just want to remind people that, that there's, uh, you know, it, it was too very, very, and I think August was very hot month. People there did a lot of watering. Just wanted to remind, I've gotten a lot of emails and people I spoke to, I think, when they went back and looked at it that way, they felt a little bit less anxious.
Thank you for explaining that, because I know some people did have an issue with that. Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, just, uh, on top of that, um, I heard from someone that their, uh, when they called, their last payment hadn't been posted, uh, so there was a bit of an overlap, so their bill was even higher. Uh, and when the payment was later applied, it was much lower. But, uh, yeah, it's a sticker shock every, every year for everyone. Um, and this year is just a little bit different of a sticker shock.
Thank you. Anybody else? Steve or, yeah, Steve?
Uh, this is a question for Lynn. Um, in terms of the leaves that people stuff in the bags to be picked up, are they being picked up by our DPW or are they being picked up by Waste Management? And if they're being picked up by Waste Management, are we paying for that pickup?
Yes, it's included in our Waste Management hauling contract. So they pick up on, um, Saturdays, I think it is. I, I believe it's posted on the town website and it's also, uh, in the, uh, tr- uh, recycling calendar. I'm sorry, the, uh, trash hauling calendar that's put out annually.
Is this, is that a cheaper way for us to go? I'm supposed to pick them up ourselves, which I, this is fairly relatively new, isn't it?
Nope, it's been in this way for a while.
We've been doing that for years, Steve.
With the, with the, uh, okay, all right.
It was in the last five-year contract and it's in this five-year, so we've been doing it for at least six years, this way.
Right, you gotta bag it, right? You can't just blow it to the, to the.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
I think we lost Tom. Any, anybody else have a question?
I got a question on the leaves, actually. Uh, is there, and I, I don't want to, uh, get anyone in trouble here, but I've driven a few streets with that. It's like driving through a canyon with all the leaves on the side. Is there, uh, if, hopefully people are getting it sucked up pretty quickly by the, the trucks that go by. Um, have we ever had any problems with, uh, people leaving it on there for too long on the tree belt?
Yes.
Is there, sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, yes, we have. Um, our neighbor's not doing it at all. And the building inspector, who's also our zoning enforcement officer, is very busy this time of year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other select board comments? Okay, Lynn Simmons, Time to Shine.
Thanks. Um, I have a short one tonight, so I'm sure you'll be happy about that. Uh, the COVID update, we have, um, twenty-eight cases in town right now. We're seeing a slow decline in cases over the last two weeks. Uh, our COVID nineteen vaccination clinic that was held at the special town meeting was well-attended. We had forty-three people pre-register and we vaccinated fifty-three people total. Of those, twenty-nine were, um, boost, uh, Pfizer, I'm sorry, Moderna boosters, ten were Pfizer boosters, nine were regular flu shots and five were high-dose flu shots. We're working on setting up other vaccination clinics targeted for those five to eleven years old. There was actually announcement late today through the Eastern Shared, uh, Eastern Hampton Shared Public Health Services that we've just, um, effectuated with Wolverham, Munson and, um, uh, Wolverham, Munson, Long Meadow and Hampton. Uh, there is a five to eleven-year-old clinic being held on November twenty-first and there's information on our town Facebook page and on the town website about that. You do need to pre-register. Uh, the Adult Center Grant opening held on November fourth was very well-attended. We estimate between four to five hundred people were there. Both parking lots were filled at the Adult Center and at Greenwood. There was parking that was, uh, happening on the street. Attendance since that opening has been very brisk and, um, they're seeing numbers that they saw pre-pandemic. There is quite a bit of programming taking place and people just overall coming in to check out the facility. We do have additional staff joining to help with the increase that we're seeing in the daily activity. Uh, for those that are calling the center, please be patient, leave a message and staff will always return your call. And on the social media front, we're trying to increase our presence. We've added a Town of Long Meadow Instagram account. If you, uh, are on Instagram, if you could follow us at LongMeadowMA. We will cross-post all our posts on all of our social media platforms. So information's not different on, you know, Instagram versus Twitter versus Facebook. And all the information's also available on the Town of Long Meadow website. That concludes my update.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynn?
I just want to commend, uh, the, having the vaccine clinic for the town meeting, I think that was a great idea. I was very happy to see that the, uh, Health Coalition is already, uh, doing some good and, and holding the community clinic for the kids. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I just, there's a, there's a story going around that the high school having reached eighty percent of vaccination is going to drop mask mandate. Do you know anything about that, Lynn?
Uh, I, I do believe they hit eighty point one seven percent and that allows them to petition to, uh, DESI to allow them to lift the masking mandate, uh, for the, the high school. I believe the school committee's taking it up again tomorrow night or Wednesday night, uh, to determine what to do for non-school events or after-hours events. But, uh, I do believe they, they did move forward with petitioning DESI.
Thanks. Um, anybody else? Okeydoke. So, um, on to old business. So am I right in understanding that we do not have minutes to approve tonight?
Yeah, correct. When I uploaded them on Saturday, um, on Civic Plus, something must have happened that they didn't see properly. Um, so I wasn't able to upload them in time. I didn't really notice until this afternoon, so I do apologize about that. Um, I'll just submit them for the next meeting.
Sounds good. Sounds good, sure. Yeah.
Sir, Mark, I, I missed something on, um, I just had one question on the monthly reports. On the finance, I, I saw that the, the, uh, high school glass replacement, I just remember that being a big thing at the town meeting and it, we had sixty K in the budget and the first quote we got was two hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. And I just wanted to wonder if Lynn knew or could find out if our budget was too low or if that quote was just crazy high.
I think it's a little bit of both. Um, I think the quote that we were using was early and or pre-COVID and we're seeing, uh, supply chain issues and just overall cost of everything rising. So, um, I think our plan, uh, is to go back out, see if the market changes a little bit in the springtime and go back out to bid. Otherwise, we'll readjust.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, old business, request to waive fees for the Adult Center. Uh, looking for a motion to waive the fifty-dollar application fee.
So move.
One second.
Any discussion? Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you. And Lynn, do you have an update on the cable license renewal agreement? You're muted.
All right, thanks. Um, I do, and I also have attorney Epstein, um, who's at the meeting here with us tonight. I'm happy to say we have really positive progress since your last meeting. Uh, I, I don't know if it was as a result of the vote to deny or if it was just or if it was just uh everything else working in our favor, but uh significant progress was made and we do have a draft license for approval. Uh, I have Attorney Epstein here, if he's still with us, he's been here for quite a while now. I hope he's still here, um, who could answer some questions about, you know, specific changes related, but um we would be looking for a vote to approve this license tonight. Um, assuming that all your questions were answered.
I am here, Lynn.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't believe that a copy of the license actually made it to your packet because this was fresh off the press here earlier today. Uh, so Attorney Epstein, are you able to just highlight the key changes? I, I don't believe there were many.
Right. Um, good evening. Yeah, I, I can do that. Uh, we do have a renewal license um that we've been negotiating, as you know, for some, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, that we've been negotiating for some time. And as you recall, two weeks ago, um, on um November first, um, I did address the Select Board and the Board passed a motion for a preliminary assessment of denial of Comcast's renewal proposal. Uh, since then, um, I have been negotiating with Comcast. Uh, there were a number of issues that were problematic and I'm happy to say that we have resolved those issues. Um, as Lynn mentioned, uh, we do have a renewal license and um I have accepted um all of those uh changes. Um, we have that license and I think Lynn mentioned that unfortunately it has not gotten into uh your packet because uh we um uh did the final change today. Uh, what I can tell you uh briefly, because I know it's, it's late, um, this is a ten-year renewal license. Um, and um we have, uh, I'm suggesting that that license would be for a ten-year term starting today. So it would be from November fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one until November fourteenth of two thousand thirty-one. Uh, the problematic uh uh issue that I had discussed with you both two weeks ago and prior to that was this so-called level playing field language. And I'm happy to say that we have agreed to language um that is acceptable. I find acceptable. I think you will find acceptable. Um, um, it, it is certainly nowhere near what Comcast was looking for, which um I believed was not acceptable. And the language in two-point-three C uh is acceptable. Um, we had um another issue about uh the cost of, of drops. I won't get into the weeds about that, uh, but the language that I proposed to Comcast is acceptable. Um, I think you know that there are now four PEG access channels, three of which are SD channels, one of which is an HD channel. And the agreement is now that uh there will be going forward two high-definition channels in Long Meadow for access use and one standard definition uh channel uh for PEG access use. Um, that, that has always been on the table. I think it's acceptable. Uh, the capital remains, uh, the new figure is four hundred thousand dollars for uh PEG access capital and that is payable at forty thousand dollars per year. The first payment will be uh no later than December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And I think I explained before that we annualize these payments so that Comcast will not charge uh your subscribers interest on that. And they have sent us a no-interest, so-called no-interest side letter. And finally, the annual funding uh payable to you, the issuing authority, uh, remains at five percent of Comcast gross annual revenues. Um, and that, that pretty much summarizes the material provisions. Um, the uh renewal license that I sent around uh to the committee and Lynn uh is acceptable. Um, and uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry that this is coming to you sort of at the last minute. Um, but um it, it, it is uh a, a license that we have been looking to uh, to finalize and it is uh, it's a good license and I think it's acceptable.
Any questions for Attorney Epstein? Yeah, Mark.
I mean, I, I, I just don't even know where to start because I was trying to write some of this stuff down and I really don't get it. Is there any way we can look at a red line version, you know, here's what it was and here's what the new one is before we vote on it? You need to ask to vote on a ten-year
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollar, you know, five percent contract or whatever it is, not having seen it. And I, I'm just, I, I, I appreciate the, the work that was done and I understand what was done, but, you know, I, 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 I can't I'm being told what the summary is.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And as I said, I, I know that we're getting to you at the um, you know, the last minute. And the fact is, the Select Board does not have to vote on it uh tonight. Um, as you recall, two weeks ago, when you passed the motion for the preliminary assessment of denial, within two weeks, um, we have to send something, this so-called statement of reasons uh to the state. Uh, it's something that um we really don't want to have to do, but I'm happy to work with Lynn tomorrow and find, uh, you know, we've had so many drafts, uh, Mr. Gold, and so much um uh going back and forth that I, I, I probably want to find a draft that is, is going to make some sense and you're not going to see a draft with, you know, red lines and strikeouts because I'm, I'm afraid that's not going to make sense. But I can certainly try to go back and find a draft that is going to show the Select Board where we were and where Comcast was and the main issues that we've resolved. And those were the issues I have. Um, I have summarized for you. And if the Select Board would like to have a more recent uh red line, then I'll certainly go back tomorrow and try to find something that I can um send to you. Sure.
I just asked one, how, I mean, I have a copy of the contract from ten years ago. How different is this? Is it, is it like totally nothing related at all to what we have?
No, no, no. And, and I will tell you that um ninety-five percent of what uh was in the um previous license is still there. It's boilerplate, Mr. Gold, spoiler plate. Um, the term is another ten-year term. Certainly in this uh two-point-three non-exclusivity is the caption. As I said, we added a new uh subsection C and that was really the most problematic issue that I discussed with you. Um, the dropped language is the same, uh, the PEG access channel's pretty much the same. Uh, you get another HD channel. Um, it's, it's virtually, um, I, I'd probably tell you, it's ninety-five percent language-wise, the same, same language, ninety-eight percent. You would recognize that this, when I drafted this, I used the preview, uh, the uh just expired license, Mr. Gold. And all I did was I went in and I made the, the only changes that we wanted. So um it is virtually the same language. Yeah. Certainly not a totally different license. No, you would recognize this.
Any other uh questions or comments for Attorney Epstein? So I guess looking for a motion to table this until the next meeting for a vote. Is that where we are?
Um, I would say I will get this, um, um, I'll, I'll call Lynn in the morning and try to get the most uh recent red line. I, I would certainly encourage the Select Board to um uh look at this and, and take a vote if possible before your next meeting, which I understand is not until December sixth. And I, and I don't say that to certainly put pressure on you, but we are faced with this um preliminary assessment of denial and it would, would certainly be more useful, that's all I can say, if the Select Board can look at the license, the new license, and I'll send something else um sooner rather than later. And I understand the problems you have, but um that's just the reality of where we are right now.
When do we need to do that by?
Well, the, you know, the, the preliminary assessment of denial that you voted two weeks ago required that we were going to have a follow-up statement of reasons by today. And um frankly, I did not do that because we reached agreement. And for a number of reasons, um, I think it would be more useful not to go down that path because we would have to send it to the state. And um we have an agreement. And um frankly, I would rather not have to do that, not have to send this thing to the state um and simply um give the Select Board time to look at this and then decide um if you want to sign it. And, and again, I apologize. I, I certainly don't like to bring something to you that you haven't looked at and I don't blame you for not wanting to sign something that you haven't seen. I, I totally understand that.
So maybe we can set up like a, like a noon time, a quick noon time meeting later in the week?
That would be, that would be good. And as I said, um, I will uh, uh, call Lynn tomorrow and, you know, she can send you uh the renewal license because I've accepted it. And I'll try to find a, a, a more recent draft that you can look at that's going to show you what, what we changed without sending you something that's just going to, you know, look like um, you know, multi-colored, you know, strikeouts.
Perfect. So we should be able to get this done this week at some point. I'm sure we can get through this together.
Right, that would be uh preferable if possible, sure.
I'll touch base tomorrow, Lynn, about that?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Anything else?
On this, there's, there's nothing else. As I said, I'll, I'll call Lynn in the morning and, and we'll um certainly try to get you something by uh, uh, to, late tomorrow morning.
Sounds great. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a good evening. I'm, I'm going to log off.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, where are we here? Oh, are we on the trash amnesty? I lost my whole agenda.
We are, yes, the annual request.
Uh, so looking for a motion to grant trash amnesty from December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one through January eighth, two thousand twenty-two of one extra bag per household per week.
I just have a question. I, I don't recall it ever being just one extra bag per household per week. I thought it had always been unlimited for those two weeks.
Uh, I, last year it was one extra uh bag per household per week. Um, and I believe it's either written somewhere that way or it's um a conversation that I had with DPW last year, but this is exactly what you adopted last year. It is not, it was not meant to be unlimited, I should say.
I think you're both right. It used to be unlimited, um, but I think we did one, one bag last year.
If you're getting complaints, that's fine, let's go. Are you on a motion? I'll make a motion that we grant the trash amnesty from December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one through January eighth, two thousand twenty-two of one extra bag per household per week.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mike, call the roll, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think that endeth the ballgame. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Michael?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you to everyone who stayed with us and who attended this evening. I know we went a little bit long and we had some important stuff to deal with. Uh, we'll see you back here uh December sixth. Have a great night.
Bye, everybody.